I came on here to do something, this is the other thing I have.
We're live. Right, is that on or off at the moment?
It's on.
It says live on my screen.
Right. That's live. What comes to life?
It's live.
It's it's white, it is live.
Yeah, it's like that's Andy's birthday.
Yeah, that's the only job I've got. Going to have some fun live, chat with our live YouTube.
Okay, right. Good evening, everybody, welcome to the large planning committee. Start off. Have no public speakers. No, thank you, that case we can go to the top of the agenda. Item one, apologies for absence.
I'm going to say to David and to Catherine.
Thank you very much for the. Yeah, Captain Davis, you've got down your meeting. Chat will come back to my first chance to write. Item two declarations of interest, receive declarations of any personal prejudicial interest under consideration on the agenda. Now.
I look at number forty three, Redfall Close, there is a planning application for number forty five, Redfall Close, and I obviously need to declare an interest there. And we'll leave the meeting for that item.
For that item, so it is the first item on planning, so.
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna go home and keep packing, but I can come back. If you want me to.
Well, it's up to you, if you want to wait in the lobby, it would probably won't take more than five minutes.
Yes, okay.
We can call you that, thank you.
Jim. There's one for fifteen more few, so I just won't comment. I'm nowhere near it, but just because I'm in the same row.
Okay, right, and Robin, your usual.
My usual one, okay, we have another planned meeting.
That's that's good, thank you very much for that. Minutes to read the minutes of the last two meetings, which was Monday fifth of February and Monday twenty sixth of February. Can we make that as a pre-record?
Yeah.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. Item four, backing in labour with the plan, their university plan, if I give you a local plan, receive any updates.
Not been given anything.
I haven't been given anything. We had a we had a meeting last week, which was actually our twenty fifth meeting. As I told the council last week, and everything's proceeding normally, we're hoping to be in a position in about two months' time to present. The names, my names to the council, even put something there, so everything is on schedule at the moment. Thank you, everyone's been taking part in that. Item four two is to receive and discuss a verbal report myself on latest conditions for the MPPF. The global impact on housing supply presumption of sustainable infrastructure in new developments. This, as you all be aware, the Department of Leveling Up Housing, etc., made some changes back in December twenty twenty three. The main ones being that if you've had a plan, enabled a plan maybe in the last five years, you no longer have to demonstrate a five-year housing supply. That, of course, was only made two years ago, so that at the moment falls in place. And the other thing is there is a presumption that any new development will have sustainable infrastructure. And applies to any plans that have been validated since December twenty twenty three, not those not those before. But that is going to be the new regime, and interestingly, almost immediately, a major planning application down at Tring for fourteen hundred houses, between Tring and Tring Station, was refused by the Secretary of State, even though his inspector had recommended approval. It was all to do with decorum, only having originally, they only had a five-year, they had less than a five-year supply. And the inspector said that wasn't acceptable, they had a two point zero six year supply, which the Secretary of State now said is acceptable, I was the new regime. It differs from ours, it's in green, but it's in the Chiltern area, they're in natural beauty. But like some of the applications we're going to be faced with, there is prime, will be prime farmland involved. And it means also any new applications will have to provide a sustainable infrastructure to support the houses they want to build. You can see it on the websites, I think I already passed that link around to all the council, a week or so ago. Catherine, any comment you want to add to that? Any questions on it? It's just a bit of the future now, until we all get to move together. Lucy first.
So is there any developments that have been fully fully moved since December or just applications have been made? So for example, how would it be, is there any way at all with them to just sustain the development?
I think I think the word was any plans, any applications validated.
Okay.
Before that date, is that correct? Yeah, well.
There were so many things different, you know.
But this wouldn't affect those anyway then, thank you. Patrick.
I'm just wondering about food security, because if people are starting to build on prime farmland. I mean, not I remember saying, well, but we were digging up every available piece of land to try and keep ourselves fed at that point. And I just wonder whether, I know we have to be very legally based, but is there any sort of, yes, they can get away with building on prime farmland, but is there any sort of planning rules that say, you know, food security needs to be taken into account, or is that?
Oh, of course.
No, I know, I just get it on the on the the notes, so, you know, food security is something that really, you know, we should be able to.
It's it's a big document, it's a hundred and twenty page document.
Yeah, I'm not asking.
And the Tring one runs to a hundred and sixty pages, the appeal document.
No, it's more a broad point about legality, whether there's anything on the books about food security being important, an important criteria when you're looking at.
Yes, interestingly, though, your lecture tonight, the approval of the appeal for Morton Road Page Three, the Secretary of State did acknowledge it was medium to to prime farmland involved, but he said that that was outweighed by the need for the development. Right.
Oh, I didn't.
You went, you went, okay, Robin.
Yeah, just to say, Chairman, I was in an interesting meeting the other night with the NFU. And it might be worth us writing to the regional entity about their take on what Jane said. Because I think when we consider things, it's been used to have a balanced view about how the farming industry see that, and they should know about their own industry. And there's always this conflict between, most of it seemed to be conflict between solar and farming and all these things which are going on. It was quite interesting listening to the NFU people speak on it, they weren't prejudiced what they said, but it was interesting, and I think it might be worth us writing to them just to have their view on what the legislation says it might support, your view or my view, we'll find out.
Andy.
Yeah, thank you, I just want to support both the councils about the food industry. We need to be self-sufficient after the Ukraine, Ukraine was attacked. There was an issue about food imports and whether we can sustain ourselves. And this is my biggest worry, that we're using farmland, and we should be self-sufficient or try to be, and not subsidize farmers to grow flowers instead of food. And I think it's very sad to be building, building houses on it. I mean, you can only build houses and then go hungry afterwards.
Steve, you've heard of Council Start Briefs, some suggestion, can we raise that letter out of this item? Or would it need to be put on the next agenda?
I think it's probably something that we have to go on a future one, because it's not actually specified in here, just said to discuss and receive and discuss. I mean, thoughts, my own thoughts really are not sure how it would influence government policy in any way, my established information.
It'd also give us, if we could lead it, Robin, with your agreement, it gives us a chance to get more information on that side, and then we could follow your idea of writing to NFU.
Truly, Chairman, I think it's always good to know what the commercial side of it thinks about it, and know what you know the countryside better than the NFU, and there's lots of opinions around all this stuff, and maybe they've got a more balanced view than most, the majority from what I was listening to.
Yeah, but the Department of Culture would be lobbying. Yeah, for that. Well. Lucy.
Oh, no, sorry.
So with your agreement, then we'll put this on the next planning agenda for discussion, and then meet time, we'll just get absolute information on what the December twenty twenty three changes to the MPPA, that entail regarding agricultural, then. Is Rob agreed to that?
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Steve. Right, moving on to item five, motion to the Council as such briefly.
Yeah. Thank you, Chairman, and this has been a long time in the coming, actually, because it's been a long time ago. Vary of reasons, because of meeting congestion and whatever, it has only just come here. Well, and the motion is referenced in the section one oh six in the application on the railway walk. Those members which are new to the council will probably not realise that the railway walk was part of the section one oh six agreement for the Tindrit Road, which was in the rights of way agreement for the section one oh six, and it was constructed to deliver safe walking routes for children to school. And despite the consecutive town clerks efforts, in these fair free town clerks now, and we're on the third one, we've just been trying to follow this up. The section one oh six didn't seem to come forward, and the reason, as it says in the motion, the reason for section one oh six, because as I just said, to facilitate safe walking routes for children to Buckingham School, Lattes School and Grenville Road. Well, what the motion seeks is its members of the council and their progress, how to progress these matters in the case of the clauses in the section one oh six, and in a timely manner and an agreement with the obligations to the section one oh six reduced below, I mean, I can read those out, you know, it's section six A, converting of the, which was the county council, which is now defunct. And six point one details the footway along the, to be done by the phasing, where the phasings have gone through and the money has been secured. So there's no reason to not pursue that, was achieved a long time ago, and six point two, the cycleway works would be constructed by the county council, and that is now Buckinghamshire Council. The reason for raising this is, I'm sure that both historical members and new members will be receiving questions around why the railway walk is still not being completed, and why the cycleway, which was part of the Buckingham neighbourhood plan, it was included in that, it was also included in the development plan for the development, hasn't been progressed. Of course, the section one is it was a defined amount of money which we did look at. My real concern is it's gone off the agenda and may have got mixed in with other ambitions, like which other cycleways within Buckinghamshire, which was nothing to do with, it's a separate agreement. My real concern in bringing it is that I think we all would like to see that completely in some form or fashion to allow parents to allow their children to walk school or cycle to school, and that would take vehicles off the Shandos Road, which was our original idea when we discussed it, when I was a Buckinghamshire County Council many years ago. And we asked for it to be put in, and we got it in the rights of way agreement, because we evidently wanted to increase, to lower the carbon footprint of the estate and the travel, and we're not there yet, so what I'm trying to see from the members is that we try to see an update on its progression. I'm sure that will be so fulfilling an information we will be jumping with joy, but we can't neglect this thing, because you will be aware that section one oh six agreements have a lifetime, and the money would have been approved by Buckinghamshire County Council to deliver this project. And if we leave it for too long, what will happen with section one oh six in law? If the council hasn't delivered it, this now being Buckinghamshire Council, it's available to ask for the money back. And if they haven't, if they say they haven't got enough money to deliver it, well, they could have delivered it earlier. And we know inflation and cost of products have all gone up. I expect that will be part of their reply, but let's wait for that, so I'm hoping members would agree this motion, whether we recommend it to council, that would be a guidance through our officers and the chair. Well, we can just do that for ourselves for now, because I don't really want to leave this till we get into a Buckinghamshire Council election or a town council election, because then we'll all be impurdered, and we won't be able to discuss it, so we need to get on and discuss this and get some resolution to it, because I can't answer the questions either as a Buckinghamshire councillor correctly to the public or as a town councillor, which is what we're here for now. I hope that helps.
Thank you for the motion, we could have seconded, Lucy.
Yeah, and I also have a couple of questions just for clarification, which, I mean, that might be one of the things that we get from the update. Is it the developers who are called to the process, or is it the Buckingham Council?
I mean, Catherine will listen carefully, because she's a knowledge of all family, when it comes to this, we've talked about it so many times. Like the board, her death, probably not bored, but probably have actually. Well, what it is, it's a responsibility of Buckinghamshire Council, because they inherit responsibility of the county council, having the legal obligations, it was them who the money have been paid to by the developers. Now, in sections, it was paid, and we've gone through the final sections, they've had the final payment for some of the cities right now. And what we haven't had is any knowledge of how they're going to progress it, is that clear enough?
Yes. The second part, well, second question was just going to be, is, I don't know if we're actual, but is this a similar situ, or we don't want a repeat situation of the medical centre on Les Hill, which my understanding was a similar situation, and the one oh six timed out.
That that is a completely different question, and I can answer that, but it's not a similar situation, because this is still currently in a section one oh six agreement, and that agreement hasn't run out. Where was the medical centre agreement, what the problem with that was, that the, I think it was called a PCT at the time, or which didn't actually put a bid in to take up the offer for the GPs. But if you read the report which is published the other week, from which I did give sight to councillors of, which is to do what difficulties around those sort of funding things and doctors surgery, that may enlighten me greatly about these things. But it isn't, it isn't linked, and and though it is linked in the sense that if we don't have people getting cycling, they might be unfit and need a doctor's surgery.
Robin, if I may, probably more more pertinent to this is that they saw money that should have gone to Buckingham Athletic Rugby Club car park, which did run out.
Yeah, this is, thank you, Chairman, there was the the the, as the chairman points out, there was an agreement on car parking, and the money, the eighteen, I think it was eighteen thousand pounds, which was not approved and ended up further. And that was to provide parking and between the district councils demise and Buckinghamshire councils arise upon the sunshine of the world. The money never got progressed, so I think through this council, they made some suggestions, but none of them fitted in with what they would allow the money to go to, so and that's an example of money going back, isn't it, Chairman?
Council, what?
I was just going to second, but.
Yeah, I think you should, Council, what do you, Jane?
Yeah, I'm rather like Lucy, I'm trying to work out who, I mean, presumably there's a when you're a spokesman to section one oh six officer about this.
Jane, I've been to Buckinghamshire Council Cabinet and asked questions on it.
Have you asked the section one oh six officer?
That is how I asked the section one oh six officer.
And what did they say?
It's on public record, and it's.
What did they say, just high bet?
Though we have intentions of so and so, so and so in progressing it, I can sort out the exact response, but it was.
Just test it, so in other words.
And that on numerous occasions, I've also asked written questions.
Yeah, that's all right, and I just don't get the sense of, yeah.
On this, and when you put a written question in, that effectively, the officer answers the question.
They should be putting this to someone like Balfour Beatty, just to.
Well, no, Balfour Beatty won't put this forward, because Balfour Beatty operates on the guise of the cabinet, it leaves a instruction from the cabinet member
So that's what the block.
To get this to be moving, I have spoken and Council Steve Broadbent, and I have spoken to him on numerous occasions of it, and bent his ear more than, and he he reserves me to whiskey, like, or whatever it calls, the cycleway provision and whatever, and we're seeking an, because it got mixed into that project of the delivery model, but that doesn't help, because this project predates that delivery model. And to be honest, I'm a bit, neither one of my more members of colleagues have questioned it particularly, but I go back with this, because I was the county member who asked it on the guidance of Catherine to get it put into the section one oh six, so I don't own the money, but I own the responsibility to try and get it done. And everyone seems to be demurred, and.
Robin, if I could ask, if if no properties were to be occupied until this cycleway had been laid out and constructed, what role is enforcement playing in this at the moment?
You make a very good point, if enforcement have not enforced anything against their own council, because the obligations are on Buckinghamshire Council, that deliver this clearly and definedly in the section one oh six agreement. Section one oh six agreement was written by an officer who is now an agent for the council. And and we had numerous conversations with him, and at the time, cabinet member was Mark Shaw. And that takes you back some time, and he was very keen that it should happen. And no, like, sadly, Mark's not a councillor anymore, so we are where we are. I have tried everything, apart from shouting, and I don't think that's really where I want to go on this, and that might be where we end up, but if this isn't done, and that isn't delivered, the residents of Tindrit Road will have paid for something they haven't received, because it's come on their count, you know, and this is a case of they have an obligation to deliver it, and even if they said they were going to do it tomorrow, they've got to plan the work. And we have, from this town council, through this committee, through the town council, asked on numerous occasions, and and nobody seems to to have the same enthusiasm for it as we do.
Thank you, Council, great work.
Roughly how much time do we have? Or is that?
I think we've probably got the best part, depending when you count how you count when the money is, the agreement was drafted.
Twenty seventeen.
Yes, twenty seventeen, I was looking to see in my head where it was.
So why?
Twenty seventeen, and so now we are, but the agreement, the section one oh six agreement was drafted in advance of that. So to where we are a bit unclear, and on the timeframe and. Ten years.
With maximal rotation on this.
Oh, it's written into the.
Yeah, I mean, we could get that, but I think that the question needs to be, if if members are minded to agree, and I've got no assurance they aren't, the question needs to be defined around the legal obligations in the section one oh six, and the obligations of Buckinghamshire Council to deliver it. Now, the response will be obviously mirror that, we have, there are written questions where I've asked this question, and we've got what I call a pastiche response, and that's when, why I brought him here, to try and start the because I know only one person in Buckingham, and I think that the town council drafted a neighbourhood plan to jump to the Buckland Society, and we were all aware of all this stuff when we drafted it, and we want a sustainable developments, not unsustainable developments.
Uh, Council, shape it.
I would propose that we move to the vote.
Yeah, I think so, Lucy, was there something you did, you have spoken twice already?
Sorry, it was just in regards to, is it worth pointing out the fact that they repeatedly said no to suit lights and down Tindrit Road on the basis of, well, you know, we're going to be getting this new cycle route, so.
Two things are linked, but not directly, the cycle, the cycleway, the Tindrit lights are not in the two seven eight works for the Tindrit Road, because they only go as far as the development. And 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 the speed limit and all those were set in a separate district, this this is set, the section one oh six agreement for that is to do with the estate. And this is a separate section one oh six agreement, which is to do with the travel. And the roundabout was in another section one oh six agreement, which included the cemetery entrance. So and and because I do remember all these things, you see, because I do remember things.
So as suggested, can we move to the vote, we've had a closer and second, everyone's got the motion in front of them, all those in favour? That's.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you very much, everyone.
I like that, you've been reading some nice.
Item six, North Park Parish's planning consortium, our representative on that body is Captain Anthony Ralph, Anthony.
Nothing to report, Chairman, and the next meeting is on the seventh of April, and I plan to report the following week when we have the next planning meeting.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Anthony? No, thank you. Item seven, Buckinghamshire Council press release. Buckinghamshire Council put out this press release about the Shendy Park guidelines. We did report on it at the last meeting, but you've got it there in your agenda as appendix A. There's not really anything that we didn't know about already on there, basically how they agreed public consultation changes, if they want to outlink roads, that Shendy Road itself would be closed, so it takes the traffic, fourth provisions, children play areas, etcetera, we obviously have an interest because of the increased traffic on the A four two one that this would generate, but that hasn't really been answered. There will be a bit of dueling between the entrance to the estate and the bottled up roundabout. But other other than that, it's not really affected us at all, Council, how do you?
Just how likely is it that Milton Keynes Council will launch a bid to say this is right on our boundary, and it should be of Milton Keynes, and seek to go for a boundary review for the city of Milton Keynes to incorporate this stuff? So what the Milton Keynes Council might do, can they?
Well, so far, they didn't, they wanted nothing to do with, they didn't want the schools, they didn't want the doctors surgeries, etcetera, etcetera, they kept saying, you know, that's a Buckingham form, but Robin's in a better position to answer this.
You might be aware that this is now part of Buckingham, the New Brexian Buckingham constituency, in the area which it goes into, and it's all part of it. Some of the things in it, like the assumptions that you can duel the road through the estate, where they are, I've walked it, there isn't enough room to duel it, so those will have to be with condition to the H six with Milton Keynes Council. So they're talking about things within another authority area that they will happen, which means they will have to have with condition and discouragement, so the idea that Milton Keynes won't have a duty. I spoke to different people, and they have, but they've done what one local authority does to the other, answer questions that they've been asked to ask. What they can't do is go and get involved in a discussion in another planning committee, other than their offices writing the response from Milton Keynes Council. But when it comes to what they might do on the boundary commission review, that might be something for a future consideration. One of the things which I did pick up from it, and I don't know the chairman did in his deliberation for it, is that there's huge concern about the fact that how to put it, the education is quite issue, and 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 where children will go to school. But there's no contribution from this going to Milton Keynes, and it's quite adjacent to Milton Keynes, and and they're quite obviously Buckinghamshire Council take the funding, so there's some disquiet between the two authorities on it. And if anyone can solve the problems since nineteen ninety six, when Milton Keynes became a unitary authority and Buckinghamshire Historical County Council, the discussions and disquiet has been going on ever since that day, so I I think it's a reasonable thing to watch, to see, but I do think the two areas, H six and Child's Way, I've walked through there, and I can't see how you could duel it through that area. The road is just a state road, and if they were going to duel it, it'd be against the residents, I can't see they can duel it through there, so their aspirations in this are are disquiet, and the idea that they will duel that section of the road, because you will be aware, because we've all talked about it, is that theoretically we're dueling the A four two one, I just imagine that those works will wait until that gets progressive at all, and of course, and so so it's all very interesting, but I do think it's just an example of where not to build an estate really, isn't it? Next to another, on the boundary of another, you know, whatever, but some of the houses would have been built in the Buckingham plan across there.
I think one point worth bearing in mind is not that the section one oh six money for Mr Bunton will be going to Milton Keynes, it'll all be. I think one point worth bearing in mind is not as, not that the section one oh six money for this development will be going to Milton Keynes. It'll all be within Buckinghamshire.
Uh, uh, and, yeah. I don't think anyone's against a doctor's surgery in it and anything like that. Why would Milton Keynes be against a doctor's surgery there? They're not going to say that. Um, it's for Buckinghamshire. I actually be really pleased if we had a new doctor's surgery in Buckinghamshire. We could all dance on a pin, couldn't we? Um, and maybe we'll do that one day in Buckingham, who knows?
So where it is, the planning application's already been submitted and, um, this, what, what this is, is design code. Um, and guidelines, they'll be used to form, to formulate the response to the planning application of that. Robin?
I know, I'd say for Steve, after this is applicable, but we could, um, write to the planning department of, um, for, for information. About what their response to this application was, so that we can see both sides of it, because it does impact on Buckingham. Um, the education, all these children will presumably sit eleven plus. Um, and, um, and they will come to Buckingham. So there is a traffic and. Um, those children presumably come to Buckingham. So there is an implication. I think it'd be interesting to know what their response was. If the chairman and Steve think that's, probably can do that because it's on the agenda. I propose we do that, just so we get their information.
So you could ju- ju- just, um, tell me again what you propose on this?
I'm proposing that we write to the planning partner, Milton Keynes Council, to ask them what their response to this was. And, um, and, um, so that we can consider it in balance to what Buckinghamshire Council's response is to it. Because of the fact that there are education implications and the implications of the A four two one. I think there are things that affect us.
Does the planning department of Buckinghamshire Council?
No, Milton Keynes. They've been put right in.
That's where I got a little bit lost on my apologies for that. Um, could I just, Catherine would like to say something.
They were consulted in our first.
Yeah, I was going to add that.
In which case.
We are not the education authority, of course, Buckinghamshire Council is.
Yeah, but, but we could, if it's, if it's, if information is available, Steve. We don't need to write to them. If the information isn't available, um, then we should write to them, at least if there's a statement that we haven't seen. Um, the members in that area seem got exercised about the whole fair. Um, I think it would be fair to say when I met them. Looking at other people around the table, you'd probably say that as well, wouldn't you, right? Thank you.
Check for, check for their response.
Yeah, and, and, and then if not, we write.
That would bring about to.
Because I do think we need to be fully informed because this isn't going to happen in any great shape, is it? And, um, and what we should do is have a balanced view, shouldn't we?
Thank you. Um, any other comments on that? No, so it is noted. Um. Number eight, Buckinghamshire Council. We milk, uh, hopefully planning forum meeting to solve the trends of the footbridge. Might be a quarterly region. It's the first one that had been held since July. Last year because of all the changes, um, at the local planning authority. Um, I attended the forum meeting and you've got my report there, which, um, I've written, Catherine.
Yeah.
Has also seen it. I think the main things to point out here are that we asked two questions, um. Both of which I was asked by this committee back in February to answer the first one about validating and determining household. Planning applications and that we were frequently not notified, validated applications for several weeks. Um, Buckinghamshire Council Development Manager, Mark Octolone replied, it is acknowledged there are delays in validating planning applications. Throughout the county, not just in the former A D D C area. We'd experienced considerable resourcing issues across the teams of late. Allied to this, we've received a number of significant age of planning applications with a very resource heavy. We fully acknowledge the delays we're experiencing and are endeavouring to get applications validated as quickly as possible. Uh, the other question, which the mayor asked me to raise was about other town, uh, other neighbourhood plans. Um, and in fact, there was quite a big discussion about that and we were told that there are now thirty eight made plans in Bucks. Forty are currently being prepared out of the hundred and seventy five parishes in the county. Two have already been made this year, twenty twenty four, at Meads Morton and Hazelmead. And Merseys, uh, neighbourhood plan was going to referendum on the sixth of March. Uh, which church, Draken, Parslowe and Beckensfield are all currently under examination. So any questions on the, uh, my report there? Robin?
I'd say thank you, Chairman, and I know it is your comments around examination of the Buckinghamshire Plan. Adoption by twenty twenty seven, um, which sounds about right. I mean. We have been involved in the Vale Plan and that was going to be adopted several times. So, um, hopefully twenty twenty seven will not be twenty twenty nine. Or twenty, or twenty thirty one, um, um, as these things do seem to have a life of their own and, um. And I think to be fair to them, the government hasn't actually helped them in delivering the plan because it's continuously changing the, um. Ballpark, um, regulations around these things, um, and it makes it difficult for them to draft a plan. But, um. We'll find out when the subgroup of the Buckinghamshire Council subgroup, which didn't employ any opposition members, have drafted the plan. Because, um, we haven't included any opposition members on it at all, despite the most.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that, that was obviously my, my report from my terms of the meeting, but Catherine has added the link to the slides. Which were provided afterwards, which is on the agenda. So, thank you very much for that, Catherine. Right, uh, moving on to item nine, action list. Um, we've got a bunch of, a couple of points I'd like to raise. Um. First of all, the cycle waves in Morton Road. Uh, we've been chasing after this up for some time. The officer was rear behind, um, and so we're trying another channel. Catherine, I think you've got enough.
Yes, I think Mr. Yori says that he's the own section one of six office collecting unit and he's dedicated it to finance to.
Thank you for that. Um, growth and infrastructure select committee may recall at the. Uh, January meeting, we asked councillor Peter Strachan, who was the cabinet member. For development, um. About comments he made, going back to the growth and infrastructure. Select committee back in November, where he said. That Buckingham Town Council, he believed, might be asking for cordons just because we could, we were asking him to provide specific. Instances where his officers didn't believe we were applying, applying material planning conditions. We also invited him to come and see us. There hadn't been any reply. Uh, until the end of February and Mr. Strachan advised our town clerk, he's going to take advice from officers before applying. To us. She has not heard anything since. And she says, if I haven't heard anything after Easter, I will chase him up again. We can't really presume that that will be Easter.
Yeah, because I let you every year, it's an annual event.
Yeah, but I think since it's the town clerk who said that, we can assume it's.
I'm joking, I'm, I'm, you know, making a response, my dear friends.
Could have been worse. He could have said to us, you can apply on February the twenty ninth.
Well, well, stay there.
Um, further down, um, the HMO list, we've been asking, uh, about HMO policies on the. Buckingham neighbourhood development plan working group is currently discussing how we can do that. There are new law that we've probably heard coming in regarding HMOs and, um, Airbnb, et cetera, et cetera, that need to be registered. Planning permission needed formally. So that, they would like to come until the summer. So we'll, we'll allow that. Um, planning responses, we did ask, I believe it's councillor Harvey who asked. About the feasibility and ending standard paragraph of planning applications about solar panels, grey water, et cetera. The clerk says this is not recommended as each response should be discussed in full at a public meeting. Um, and then finally, St Rumburn's field access, um, the Berkeley access to top. Will take them up by the planning officer who's been investigating it.
This is the bus.
Bus planning officer, sorry. And that was on the twenty second of February. There's been no response. Okay. So that should be clear then, the bus, the Buckinghamshire.
Yes.
Planning officer. Thank you. Uh, anyone else got any questions? John?
Yeah, we wrote a thought to a bus company about the code seventy seven coming through, um, town. And I wonder why I seemed to have actioned.
Thank you. That's it. I do recall the. Comments about the, um, tapa de gila bus. I don't recall what happened since. I apologize. I'll have to go back to the clerk.
Okay. I saw it the other day, like early in the morning, and thought this is a useful bus to get. You know, add to slime, toxin and so on. And of course, going the other ways, the airports and what, whatever.
So we'll leave that.
Yeah.
Very much.
That's probably right. Yeah, it's fact, John remembering that, I remember you raising it. So, um, um, and that may have been probably June or, or July. I was, I mean, it was warm. I remember that. It was a nice sunny day.
Thank you. Um, no other comments on that then, or item nine on the action list? We can move then on to planning applications and, um.
I shall.
We will call you later.
Yeah.
We might be right there.
I'll go and pick up a couple of cases now.
If you're going to wait for this, of course, funds are going to go down very well.
Sure, amazing, chairman, sure, amazing.
Thank you. Um, yes, so now item one on the list was forty five, which are close. Just to get to each plant up. So the household application for a quick hill rear extension, um. There has been. One fairly major objection to it by a neighbour. Um, who's objected on the proposed first floor extension on several grounds, uh, which was set out in. A very big video with lots of photographs, so that this is why it couldn't appear on the planning board. But basically, the ground is based on parking guidance, it's four bedrooms and there's, they can't, they can't provide three parking spaces. Uh, changes to the character of the area, loss of light and boundary inadequacies. I believe the Buckingham society has a view on this.
We, we, um, we tend to agree with the objections on, on sort of. Looking at the plans, it does seem to us that really, it doesn't hinge on the immunity of the neighbour. And in, in a, in a way that is unacceptable. So we would object.
So would we put overdevelopment into that as well?
Yes, I think with the.
The state.
Lot, not enough parking issue as well. Um, I think it is overdevelopment.
Yes, on, on the L three better, that's right, yeah, L three better parking standards, they have to provide a minimum of three parking spaces for bedrooms. I think.
Of certain widths. One of them will be a garage and we all know what a garage is like.
So anyone else got any comments on this? If not, Martin?
Yeah, the, um, boundary issue, is that just an oversight? I mean, it doesn't look like it from the picture, which does a dog's leg. So that's obviously, um, something that needs to be corrected.
I have asked the officer who went back to the agent and hasn't come back to me really answer yet.
And would they have a, uh, party wall agreement?
That is part of the residents' complaint, but of course, that's not within our range to, to sort out.
No.
Yeah, but it is involved, there is a party wall dispute involved.
It, it's complicated by the fact that the houses are staggered so that the party wall is a whole wall, not a party wall.
Yes.
And, but that's, that's a legal thing that I have to go into.
Yeah.
Good career, these are awesome.
The, the, uh, the neighbour has gone into several pages worth of diagrams of what's going on from here.
It appears to be a fairly learned labour as well. It's, it's knowledge of planning law. Um, in that case, I tend to propose then that we object to this on the grounds of the. Parking guidance, the changes to the character of the area, overdevelopment, loss of light to neighbours and the boundary inadequacies. Seconded by councillor Ralph. All those in favour? That is unanimous, with the exception of councillor Shaker and councillor Southbury. Thank you, John.
I think that coming now. More smoking.
I totally agree with you, Andy. With the information of our, um, our shark council, we, we are, we have objected unanimously with you.
Noted.
Without, without you two. Yes, thank you. Just, just for your information.
Thank you for letting us know.
Moving on to item two then, eighteen Hilltop Avenue, before this last bump, when they applied for a certificate of lawfulness to. That garage into, um, a domestic room, um. Although, thank you for to pay back, it actually needed a full dwelling application, which we got in part of us, we had no objection since last time. Is everyone happy with that? So I propose that we. Have no objection, seconded by councillor Ralph. All those in favour? That's everyone except councillor Southbury. Thank you. Um, item three, Briss, nine Bristol Hill, um, it's a four back door. Into the back door. Uh, the reason that's come up is because both the front and back of the house are listed and I'm sure Buckingham society will have a very strong view on this.
We have a very strong view on the fact that it's produced a really beautiful door. We have no objection.
Not just the door, the handle.
Details were exempt.
They, they made, they made quite a big point that they want a less modern door and, and handle.
Close, very sensitive application.
So I propose that no objection, seconded by councillor Ralph. All those in favour? And thank you, that's unanimous, the exception is all of us, thank you.
Sussies.
That's a bit of nonsense, but unanimous with the exception of everyone, but. Thank you. Um, number four is fifteen Wall View, which councillor Trias declared as. You, you are going to vote on this, aren't you?
No, I'm just. I'm not going to leave.
Household application for a two story side, side extension. Um, it's the last house in the cul-de-sac. And it's up against such a bank. Um, Catherine's provided a number of notes about it. Um. Karen, have you, have you got any?
We have no objection to that. In fact, we thought it was quite an ingenious plan. Um. It doesn't impinge what anybody's, I mean, or anything else, because I have talked these days. Um, yeah, I think it's a.
It actually improved his look, isn't it?
Yes, yes, yes. A number of them tonight actually do improve.
Yeah. There's no parking issues and no vegetation will be affected by the proposed matching materials. Is everyone happy there? I propose an objection, seconded by councillor Ralph. All those in favour? That's everyone. Then, not so much, but thank you.
So I'm getting earlier now. Isn't there normally a, a lower level roof?
So the surveying group, we did, we did discuss that this afternoon, our technical briefing, and we felt that. It, it, it was slightly of a plan that we didn't actually need to stress that, but if you feel we should.
Well, I, I think we should. I think we should. And, and also, I mean, it's other parents, grey water on this and previous applications.
Unfortunately, you've already taken the vote. What can we do, Steve?
Uh, well, we have, we are taking the vote, but, um, sure.
It's just a rider. It's just saying, Changdu as well, it's in there, think about.
Oh, sorry.
It's just a rider. It's not, it's not a requirement. It's just a prompt. It's all we're saying. If a level work like this is done. That's a prime root and some powers on, never let scapping up anyway. Think about solar panel, that's all we're saying.
Okay, that, that can be added well to the, uh.
Think about.
Challenges to the roof, that's the surveying route, assuming what you're taking the vote on.
Uh, we begin, we're taking a good time, but I'm sure that there's Catherine will, uh, answer appropriately.
Yeah. Thank you. Right, move on to White Hart Hotel, which is applications five and six, uh, solicited building. It's in two parts, it's the full part. The internal part is for internal operations, existing breakfast room. I think we deal with that first.
I'm excited.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's really good, um they're going to make it more accessible. And the fact that they will have a disabled toilet, which can be used at all times, is the current disabled toilet that's going to be used when the main room is
Caroline, is it?
Agreed, no. Yes.
An improvement. Yeah, an improvement, so Buckingham society, that is well. Um and then the other part is the exterior. So I'm just bringing it up. Yeah, they wanted to do quite a lot of, um, work to the terracing in the back, the garden area. Um the application was made last year to enhance it, the heritage office had concerns about that part of the proposal. And the applications were decided excluding the garden works. Um he was particularly concerned about the height of some of the shelters and the covered awnings, uh and he felt in heritage terms, the application did not comply with the relevant heritage policy. Therefore, there unless there was sufficient planning reasons, it should be refused, but that was the last one. Hasn't made a similar comment this time, has it, because?
That made any comment.
No, no comment at all, so uh um the proposal is to remove the existing smoking shelter, replace it with a new enclosure, the roof ballast parade. Um because there'll be pergola with front walls. Direct two timber pergolas, one on the upper terrace, one on the middle. Um the natural had boarded sides up to dago light. The perspex and timber trellis had to install energy efficient bestune, bestune lighting on the lower terrace. Ported on poets. Um the main concern, I would have to that, is that this basis directly onto the apartments in Candleford Court. Um and I could personally, I, I wouldn't be happy with the light pollution on that, but members may think otherwise, Lucy.
Um agreed to light pollution, and also, I would imagine that whilst creating some sort of a covered area outside, may increase the amount of people that are going to be out there later, uh in the evening, from also then with much noise later in the evening, which generally the past residents live at, maybe many living at, children living in sick could be impacted.
Yeah, it's eleven A M to eleven P M, so Catherine notes. Uh but of course, people are doing that already at the moment, it's just that these terraces is going to take it further towards Calvert Court. Um who would like to? I would, so uh can we deal with it in two parts, like last month, interior and next year? Yeah, so I'm, I'm going to propose that we have, sorry, Martin, thank you.
Yeah, uh hum. You were saying that um they're slightly extending it towards it, but at the moment, it's not covered, but they're not pergolas, sort of covered a little bit?
No, it is.
They're, they've just got the beams across, haven't they?
Glass, yes.
And then you'll have ivy right, right around it. So it's still open to the elements?
Yeah.
But, okay.
So legally, uh it can't have more than, um I think it's three covered sides, otherwise they wouldn't be able to smoke anywhere, and I would imagine that's what they're doing.
Hmm.
Yeah, they are going to have covered sides, but only today, though, aren't?
Yeah.
To create a, an outside space that people can smoke in on licensed premises, they can't have, yeah.
Yeah, John, did you want to say that something?
I was going, I'm just, I'm reading the notes here, I can see now that it's not going to be very hard, but I guess, if, if, if Martin's saying that they're likely to have noise down running anyway, resulting with the recording equipment, then I, you know, I, I can see that it might be used more. I don't know, I, 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 I'm in two minds about this, I have to say. I don't have huge objection concerns.
You will recall that there were television screens involved in last year's applications.
There wasn't in this.
They could, well, that's, they've been withdrawn.
Yeah, no, there was a bit of a, going on, et cetera, et cetera. They've adapted to the feedback that they had.
Yeah, exactly.
And there's a bit of meaning to it, well, they've adapted it, they've adapted it reasonably well. And they're doing all, all of it in my view.
There was a plan that would catch screens, so that you could see Robin in action at select committees. Yeah, that'll read.
Yes. Now they're playing that at five to eleven.
Oh my gosh.
So if one's had a say, I propose then that we have no objection to the interior changes. But we do object to the exterior ones on the grounds of the lighting, bestune lighting, um and we would need to leave it to the heritage officer to weigh his comments, which I don't know, you know. It's a subject, subject to her heritage officer's approval as well. Anthony, thank you, seconded by Anthony. All those in favour?
Is this for the first part?
No, we, we're moving together, it's in the
Well, that's a shame, isn't it?
I've approved, I've suggested approval of the interior, but we're checking the exterior. On, on those grounds, all of them, if they take the lights away.
Yeah, oh yeah.
And the heritage officers are happy, then we wouldn't have the use it quite a lot.
Do you want?
You can throw it in. And there, there are two applications, the second number. No, but it's, it's, it's an application that always has to have a second one because it's listed.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it's one application, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, this is difficult, isn't it?
So, so that is seconded, so all those in favour? Right, it's not everybody, so.
I can't see you.
Right, I could do that now. So if you could put hands up again, so we can count. No, all councillor Trias.
Okay.
I can't see that side.
Guys, okay, um anyone against? One against? Abstentions? One abstention, or two, two abstentions of Robin, of course. Councillor, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Um we move on to fifty five at Wells Street, which is backed for another application, this is the house, a lot of good work's being done on, this is regarding the chineses, um we were putting to chimney seat one, you've had all the plans there. Haven't anyone got any comments? Uh Caroline, Buckingham society?
Well, there are comments, we, we have no objection to this application. And but when you look at the listed applications as being you think the planning officers have been extremely hard on, he is you know, the applicant is, we think, doing a rather good job. And he is trying really hard, and every time he tries to do mine, they, 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 yes. And I think it's an example of power is much more successful when it comes to individuals than it is to, uh big developers.
Yes, you, you will hear later on, on the agenda, that, that one of their current applications for this working site has been refused.
Yes, I saw that, yeah.
L P O needs some further information, but, so as you say, it's, they seem to take two steps forward and one back.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Unless there's any other comment, I propose that we have no objections to this. Seconded by councillor Ralph. All those in favour? That's everyone above councillor Southbury. Thank you. Uh move on to number eight, which is seventeen A Western Avenue, there's a household application for a regular part single part double story extension. It is a big increase in the house footprint, it's seventy percent, but uh they have a very big garden there, and it also might be worth noting that they've got a lot of trouble not to make it a full width extension, so that they don't take light from their neighbour. Uh which is commendable. Um Buckingham society.
No, we had no objection to it, we thought it was really perfectly good application, despite the size of it, I think the property can take it and, and I think it's been quite polite to its neighbours as well.
Thank you. Any other comments on that? In that case, I propose we have no objections, seconded by councillor Ralph. All those in favour? Everyone except councillor Southbury. Thank you. Um application number nine, it's twenty two Bridge Street, it's Golden Scissors, the, the barber shop which replaced Taylor's. It's a retrospective application, um dating back to twenty eighteen. I don't quite know why it took so long to get around. You will recall the history of this, they did have um a barber's pole, which was uh although it didn't revolve, it had sequential lighting by individual light bulbs, that has been removed now. And all they're asking for is approval of the signage. Which um we noted at the start, and it was the meeting, is a lot less garish than when Taylor said it.
Yes, me.
Um anyone else?
Uh my comments are that what they, they had, obviously, because it's retrospective, is uh writing on two facias and pictures in the windows. And if we look back to the history, there was writing on two facias and lots of pictures in the windows, there's nothing materially different. So I would be very much in favour of this one.
Yeah, great. Anyone else? In that case, I propose no objection. Seconded by councillor Ralph. All those in favour? Everyone except councillor Southbury. Thank you. Um next application is for seventy six Western Avenue, household application for a single story side and road extension. The direction of replacement garden building pro and gym. Uh planning notice hasn't gone after this one yet, so capital will make the normal
No, we're going for a one street line, but I mean, it was probably twelve of them, but not this one.
Okay. Um it looks very straightforward, they are going to ask buildings in the backyard, so it's going to be removed and replaced by the, the building pro and gym. Anyone have any comments?
We, we had no objections to it really, but I have to say that it's a very large extent of flat roof. Which personally I don't particularly approve of, but um I, my thought was that with this huge flat roof at the back, it would be easier to build up. There'd be nothing to do with, with the current application, which we didn't really have an objection for, which
Just to make the point, they have broken the flat roof, haven't they, with a style?
They have broken it with a skylight, indeed.
Yeah, and I remember at the last meeting, we had, we had this on another flat roof, and members agreed that because it is broken by
It was more acceptable.
Uh V shape, yeah, it was more acceptable, yeah. Thank you for that. Anyone else have any comments on that? Again, as you see from Catherine's report, it is a large site, has the usual long garden um from Western Avenue. Um and they got side space as well, um. So um I propose that we have no objections, seconded by councillor Ralph. All those in favour? Everyone except councillor Southbury, thank you. And the next application also has no planning notice yet, which is twelve Pillow Way. It's an infill. Uh this property applied to convert the garage into domestic space in twenty nineteen, but it's refused uh because of lack of parking space. Uh all they've come back with is a infill application between the garage and the, uh the L, the L shape or T shape of the, uh, the house. Um the reason for this is because on Lates Hill you have to make applications in order to safeguard the amenities of the area by enabling the local planning authority to consider whether planning permission should be granted for development, having regard for the layout and design. This is what they're doing. Uh Lucy?
I think it's going to make that kitchen dining on the muck nice area, and it doesn't really take away much garden space. So I think it's quite a good idea.
Uh councillor Trias.
I don't have any objection to the item. I'll be interested how they take away an internal corner though, on an external wall. But that's their problem, not mine. Because they're not, they're not showing any pillar retaining there in the middle of the room. But um say, that's not a planning issue, that's a building issue.
But they have, of course, they have to be building
Absolutely.
Approval, which is our, is not our remit.
No, it certainly isn't.
Worth, worth pointing out, thank you. Anyone else? In that case, I propose we have no objections. Councillor Ralph seconded it. All those in favour? Everyone except councillor Southbury. Thank you. No, very well. It's going to go wrong, isn't it?
Shouldn't ever say something like this before the meeting, isn't it?
We haven't got to get in yet. Um item twelve, uh thirty nine Berry Peace, this is on the Lindon Village, household application for garage conversion into habit space and link from the garage to the main house. Um we see Catherine's plan there, there are, there are three party spaces, but they are all in tandem. Um anyone?
I was just going to say that I think well, probably a third of all those garages in Lindon Village have been similarly converted by now. Or a large number anyway, so I haven't actually done the calculations, I'm guessing here, so.
But you can't get a car into most of them anyway.
You can't get, well, it keeps a car in those garages anyway, unless it's a sort of little
Yeah, I feel my
Or no, if you have a little old number or something like that, but otherwise people keep their junk in the carriage.
Oops, as though they're going to keep their teenager in. It's going to be effectively a bedroom and after, um study space, it's in the application, so.
Yeah. So, um.
Uh two thoughts here, um it's only a personal one, the first one is that, of course, they are now stopping getting to their back garden via an external means, uh because they're they're cutting that off. But um again it would have to have some sort of uh party wall agreement, because that is a garage, they're converting into living. They would have to double skin it somehow, because it would just be a single brick at that time. Um uh again, it's a, it's a building regs issue, I would have thought. Um not a planning issue, but um it would make it even narrower than it is now, if they've got to do that.
I'm just thinking of plans, because we're, we're talking, yeah. I see your point about the garden access.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know. There are lots of terrace houses which don't have access to their garden from an outside point.
And London.
Um you have to go through the house.
You have to go through the house, exactly, yes. Uh so, you know, it's, it's it's if you've got it and lose it, and, but they've obviously decided that's fine. But it, it's just that um adjoining garage. Um and making it into a human living space, rather than a storage or anything else.
No, the car, the garage with the car in front of it is next to us.
Yes.
Again, that's, as you say, it's a building regulation matter, we don't know what their intentions are, what they're going to do.
No.
So, any other comments? In that case, I propose we have no objections, seconded by councillor Ralph. All those in favour? That's everybody, apart from councillor Southbury. Item thirteen, this is the bin store at Candleford Court. I think you want to leave me on Catherine's report on that. It's basically taken and tidied the site up tremendously. It's not just the bin store, it's also the action of new, new structure generator for the car park extract. Ventilation fans, which have at last been, have been moved out of the underground car park, where they're, most of the time they're underwater. Thank you for your photographs, Catherine, that explains it all. That second photograph where you can see green bins is where it will be, it'll be a new structure with a generator, it will tidy up that whole corner, because this is in the conservation area, and it's at one of the main entrances to the town, so much needed work. Martin?
Yeah, I'm interested in your words tidying it up, um because I haven't made much effort to keep it tidy, um so tidying it up they will need to do. And there was a bin store there once upon a time, wasn't there? Which got wrecked, basically.
Thinking, was it not the large, the generous, come back a generator?
Well.
I think that may be just not, yes, there was, it was just an open
Yes, it was, yes.
Alcomy thing, but a bit of a wall across the front.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I, yes, I think it's a comfortable other storm.
Uh I'm not too impressed with having doors in the front, because um I don't know, I get a feeling that, you know, they'll never be closed and they'll just drag the whole area down, really. You might as well just leave them open, let people walk in, because you won't be able to see the bins from, from you won't be able to see the bins from, from the road uh, very easily, so, you know. My point of view is leave them open and then they won't get bashed and everything else, so don't, don't have doors on that side of it. That'd be my um, alteration proposal.
I don't think we're in a position to declare that we have doors on it, but a lot of. Well, we're in a different material.
But they obviously are thinking that closing it will be okay, but it's, you know.
I don't know what arrangements Candlefoot Court has, but I mean, if, if you're going to put your, your rubbish overflow to your domestic bin and you want to put it in a backpack in the skip, then you've got to have access to the skips, haven't you? Unless there's some kind of depot at the bottom of every staircase and somebody brings it all out into a skip on bin day, um, there's got to be those doors. And people will close them or they will slam shut and the lock will break and. I don't know. I, I agree with councillor Try, but I don't think we say anything else.
Thank you. Well, I'm adding you too. That's why we're here, all this and uh.
Um, so the bin store, um, flats where I live has a door with a lock on it. And every time they fix the lock, someone kicks it open so they can use the bins. And they've just given up fixing it now, so it'll just be open all the time.
You have to start kicking it open.
I don't know.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the proposal, but I would say a suggestion is forget the doors on the left, save, save yourself some money.
Okay, no, that's, uh, great, yeah.
Well, I was just gonna say, um, I do have a flat somewhere where we have the little building with doors on it, but that's an incredibly boardwalk place. This, I think, is unnecessary gentrification, having doors on it. I just think, as councillor Try says, doors will just not work, but I'm, but I may be wrong.
I'm listening to you. In that case, I will make a proposal that um. We have no objection to the overall plan, because we would recommend that the doors are left off. Basically, to keep the place looking tidy. They'll be open, they'll be swinging, they'll be banging, you know.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, before we put it to the vote, John?
Just to say it's not the doors on the, on the second building, which that can date, on the generator.
Bin store.
Bin store.
Just a bin store, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, you'd have to keep the generator ones off for obvious reasons.
And that's a high offence as well.
Execution and uh. Good. Um, in that case, that's my proposal, seconded by councillor Ralph. All those in favour? That's everyone except Robin. Thank you, Martin, for keeping us on the, the right track. I kept looking at that. Hold it this morning, it never occurred to me, it's a good point there. Right, um, now this is going to be an interesting one, um, number fourteen, that's between number thirty-eight Morgan Road and the old police station. Um, in Morgan Road, seven buildings of access. A car park in Landscapling and Associated Works. We have had a response from the triad, so.
Why not?
Yes. Just a bit of a question, council. And this completely changes the whole complexion of the application because he pointed out this site is classified as woodland. Notwithstanding the previous removal of almost all trees within the site, this does not materially alter its classification. Hmm. Uh, valk policy NE eight explicitly requires a minimum of twenty-five metre natural buffer should be provided around woodlands. And in addition, the forestry commission has issued an enforcement notice against this site on the twenty-second of February twenty-four. Uh, this is in relation to restocking notice, which is not compliant with in twenty-twenty-two. It requires the replanting of two hundred and eighty-six trees spread over the entire site with trees protected for a minimum of ten years. This is based on pace law, Arnold White States Limited versus Forestry Commission twenty-twenty-two. Which means the planning regime does not affect the operation of the Forestry Act nineteen sixty-seven. Uh, therefore, it can be concluded that all trees in the site would require removal to fit the houses in. And that an off-site tree is likely to suffer considerable damage as a result of proposed development. It's therefore clear that quantum development would not provide a satisfactory compensatory strategy for the loss of existing trees and woodland. This is contrary to both policy NE eight of the Val and to policy DEH one of the Buckingham neighborhood plan. Development should not seek to enhance and expand Elsbury Vale's trees and woodland resources. Um, I've got photographs here, I've got one on the either side of the table. Um. The site we're talking about is immediately under Rexes Station Gardens button. So this was in twenty-twenty-one, prior to the selling, the legal selling, all the trees on the site.
So, just so I understand.
Recently, yes.
Oh, sorry.
Chair, just so I understand this, so what they're saying is that the law requires them to give up any idea of planting any houses or building any houses and they've got to replant the trees that they.
Yeah, they just, it's crap. I did say it rather fringes the complexion of the application.
Um, would it be possible to find out uh, what sort of trees, I'm just mentioning it maybe in the kitchen garden and have a survey in what sort of trees are replanted there?
An orchard?
Yeah, that, that's what I'm thinking, sort of community orchard.
Twenty-twenty application do, do a tree survey of what was remaining, which was basically around the edge. And they were. All sycamores.
Yeah, I think maybe it would be a.
But we.
Seven sycamores, the off-site one, which is in the garden of the cottage just below, is a hazel. As a, quite a, quite a large hazel.
This is one of those rare examples of a developer taking a plant and getting it completely wrong.
This was not this development, which was completely before, it was thrown out, and he sold the site off.
Yeah.
And let these poor people in it, basically. So, would you, um, no, that's.
No, no, I was just going to say that is actually in line with, you know, where in in some places around the world, there had been, you know, fire set in desirable areas so that afterwards you could develop the land because now there's no more trees to protect. I'm very pleased to see that the tree offices, it doesn't matter at all, replant them and then they will be there to protect. So, uh, yeah, interesting.
Robin, is this still an application, which is common?
Yeah, this is a mental plan.
Okay. Just wanted to know, because I was busy reading some ads. Yeah. When you started talking about it, it sounded very interesting. We spent quite a lot of time on this site, haven't we, over the last couple of years? Obviously, making big wasted stuff. Um, unless anyone else has got any comment, I'm going to make a proposal that we oppose this application on the grounds of the comments made by the Buckinghamshire tree officer. Also noting that there is a live enforcement action against this site by the forestry commission, which over arches, um, any planning considerations?
Yeah, I can second that.
Second, yeah, thank you. Um.
Can I just add a comment? I think it's very interesting that this um comment from, and enforcement by the forestry commission should be enacted on a site like this, which was largely sell-soared ceilings over the course of about fifty years. And not, nothing sort of TPO'd or um, particularly rare. So, I think it's very interesting that even if it's scrubbed basically, and sell-soared sycamores and ash, which is really what it was. Um, they can still enact this. I think it's brilliant, isn't it?
Yeah.
Um, I would also ask, before we approve this, that um we request this be called in. Yeah, good thinking. But I hope we might have some support from our um Buckingham board chair councillors on that if necessary.
What we're good at will do, yeah. So don't mean it that bit.
Oh, thank you. So, I put that, you, you seconded it, Anthony?
Yeah, I did. I was, I was just going to, through your challenge of response to Harry, I'll say, I think the important part is designated with, um, what was actually growing on it, it's what we're seeing it too. Uh, I'd take top, but from a lean point of view.
Well, it's actually stronger than designated, but it's slightly classified as, as would the notwithstanding the previous removal of almost all the trees in the site, it does not materially alter that classification. John?
Can we, I heard that the town investigates how we can get other parts of the town classified. It seems as if that could be quite a powerful thing. So can we find out if there's a process whereby we can initiate such a process in areas which we think needs to be protected?
We can think of places.
A few areas in the town.
Well, I think Holloway Spinney is absolutely packed with protected trees, but I think Bernie Close has not got a single one.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, if we're going to just find out if there's a process.
Castle House Woodland, I think, is fairly well protected.
Yeah, who, who, who classified it when, now, basically?
Yeah.
And can we, I mean, that if we wish to, we are the owners.
Yeah, Catherine can perform back to the next meeting. Thank you. We've had, so it's all going to second rate, happy that, all. So, all those in favour?
Yeah, definitely.
That's everybody, the exception of Robin. Thank you very much, I think. I think it's fun, might get a bit of a fight over this, but we'll uh see what happens. Um, and the final application to Microsoft to look at is number fifteen, which is Wall Street Centre, sixty-one Wall Street. As you are aware, the proposal is to move the sixth form. Um.
Yeah.
So I just. Right, they got it. So, so this, this is the sixth form that's been moved from, um, which school is it?
Uh, down.
Uh, it's down, yeah, sorry. So this is for seven pupils and a transport plan's been submitted. We previously saw this and we commented on the fact we thought it's unlikely that even six-form pupils, uh, these needs would be driving there and indeed they'd come back with a different transport plan. Um, none. There, there'll be staff, there will be, some, some staff will travel by car, some will walk. None are anticipated in the site. Um, mode of transport, school people are translated by drop-offs, by parents, fifteen, walking five, mini bus or bus twenty. The bus can take seven pupils and two staff, they're food trips from um, Windsor or wherever, if necessary. So basically, it's quite a well laid out travel plan. Um. Previous site plan's been amended to include the following, and thanks to Catherine who managed to put together the revised plan because it wasn't coming out on the planning portal. So that's what we've got, prospect of um, having a sixth form there. Um, Robin, if you'd like to speak on this?
I wouldn't speak on the application, General, but I will say that um, related to the application, you will know that I've been involved in chasing things up for a long time, special education need and um. And I think finally they're doing things which may actually make a difference. Um, and um, and clearly, um. I hope this application um, comes forth very quickly, um, to be decided because it's in everyone's good that there's a decision around this and that not commenting on the decision you'll make tonight. Commenting on the need, which is slightly different in the application.
Thank you. Um, Caroline?
Could we just make a comment that, um. The Wall Street residents are obviously, um, concerned about the increase in the traffic. Um, but most of all, construction management plan, because obviously there is going to be quite a lot of lawyers coming in and out to deal with car parks and so forth. And they are very concerned about the parking in, on the street of St. Park. So they would like to see a construction management plan.
Although just to point out at that point, there are, it is doubly in reliance, isn't it? So does that?
It, it doesn't stop, um, people, particularly contractors, parking on them.
Right, good point. Is there a construction management?
There isn't yet. I will point out that they're hoping to have it opening in September, over the school holidays. And I could just play around.
So we'll include that in our response.
There's not a whole lot of exterior stuff to do, there's a new ramp and some new doors standing extending.
You're more sensitive than that.
But I think, they, probably the playground can be used to park them, but we can say so.
Yeah, Robin, not commenting on the application in, in sense, but this is council property. So, the constitution states that if I had a planning application or the mayor, as councillors, our application had to be determined at committee in any case, and as this is a Buckinghamshire council property, I would imagine that this would have to be determined in a planning committee, in an open meeting because of the fact that it's a council, so I should imagine that, um. Any support or, or um, comment you've got, there will be opportunity for an application, you've seen in Buckingham, which is quite rare, isn't it? Um, and I'm not sure where it will go to, but it will, it will according to my understanding of the planning constitution, have to be determined by the council in an open meeting because they are the owner of it and they can't do that behind closed doors.
Can't delegate.
So, so you can decide what comments you want to make and um. Or perhaps hopefully someone to go and talk to, whichever opinion you have about this application. Um, and that will give you ample opportunity to support or disagree. I'm trying to retain my, um, uh, new charter around this and um not be predetermined, my dear.
So, anyone else wants to speak? Uh, Martin?
Um. The Wall Street Centre has been many things over the years. Um, but I noticed, or I thought, I've got a few points. I thought that the residents used that area for parking when it wasn't in use. I don't know whether that's official or unofficial.
No, it's okay sometimes, it's not, it's not too natural.
Do they? Okay.
It was open to users of the garage when it was a restaurant, there was an agreement in need.
Was there, alright.
But you risk being locked in if you left your car there.
Yeah, no, no, because they got two sets of gates, one halfway up as well, so they're going to have an inner sanctum there. Uh, the other point was, um. It says temporary collection area for waste and wheelie bins quite close to the uh, street gates. If it's temporary, I know it's been used in previous things, so there's, you know, they've got the waste bin s- collection sorted because it's been used before like that, but I wonder why they put temporary, because I can't find anywhere else where they're suggesting is going to be permanent. It's the southern east building it's highlighted.
Yeah, Catherine, just looking at.
Yeah.
What's your take on John?
Just to a song of my, as you said, to not, not mean that's why they'll put them on collection day on.
Yeah. Hmm.
On collection day, they'll just put them there.
Oh, I see, that's.
It's like temporary, it's.
On the day.
Right, on the slide. Okay, so it's nearer the gate to the bin maker or truck person.
I think so, I assume they probably make.
Can I get it?
I would say.
Better than putting them actually on the street.
No, no, absolutely, that's fine. Thank you for that clarification.
Lucy?
No, that's.
That was the same one. In that case, there's no other comments, I propose that uh, we have no objection to these plans, but the advisor uh, that we ask that there will be a a construction management plan.
Yeah.
Seconded by Anthony. All those in favour? Thank you everyone for that. I think we should be very proud that we're going to have a third sixth form school.
Yeah, I, I think on this one I'd better abstain as well.
We're both abstaining.
Okay, you're abstaining because we're both councillors.
Just in case. Yeah, I might be, you know, there might be, e- exactly, exactly. And if it's, since it's.
I mean, it's such a rare occasion that we have a planning meeting about, I mean, you ought to be there, Annie.
Well, are we bound to turn up it?
Well, yeah, I mean, we ought to go and celebrate.
Yeah, on the business list, we've still got something to go through. Planning decisions, item eleven. Land in Ozeo Way, um, you were all. Land in Ozil Way, um, you were all constantly aware of the opposed list, um. And we, I raised the motion at full council on Monday, which was approved and has gone off. Um. Twelve to thirteen Market Hill, which we're opposed to for various reasons, some of them connected with the facade lighting. That has been removed from the application and it has been approved. Um, it was noted by the planning officer that it's a car free application. And that the quote, she said, there's no sign of detrimental impact on the amenity of nearby residents. Um, this is about the Mansard roof, you know, and everything, so that has been approved. Um, and the other one which we opposed was number seven Crone Close. You'll recall this, um. Was a side extension to number seven Crone Close, which they've now called seven eight Crone Close, which. Concern was that it was being treated as a separate house. The conditions of the approval are the annex accommodation shall not be occupied at any time other than for. Purposes ancillary to the residential use of the dwelling house. And it should no time be independently occupied, let or disposed of, or used to accommodate then breakfast guests. Or other short term visitors paying rent or fees. This is to ensure the use of the annex accommodation remaining ancillary to seven Crone Close. To protect the amenity of neighboring occupiers and ensure, um. That the. Yeah, just throwing, I'm sorry. That, that's it, maybe neighboring occupiers. Um, that was approved, but I am going to once again raise a concern that contrary to the constitution. This application was discussed with the chairman and vice chairman of the committee. And determined between the two of them, together with the service director. Um, this is exactly what happened with Ozil Way, two councillors and the service director. Um, delegated were meant to give delegated approval, and this is concrete. As I say, to the constitution, which is quite specific, it should only be one councillor and one service director. And, um, it smacks almost of a small committee room like this, but I have great concern about this, this is the second application. In a month, this has happened, Andy.
Yeah, I would agree, not that I. Have a massive issue with the conditions they've put on there, it's the principle of how the decision was arrived at, yeah, and on that. On those grounds, I think I would agree with your comments, Chair.
Yeah, I think we save that for the future and just keep an eye and see if there's any further applications that, uh. Are delegated contrary to the constitution. Thank you, anyone, any comments on those? Um, few of the applications, fifty-five Wells Street, we mentioned already about the politicians in selling the fence. Um, we had no objections subject to the satisfaction of heritage officer, but he said there was insufficient information supplied. We didn't have his comments at the time, we had no objections. Um, the other one is Alder House, Bernie Close, which is the flats opposite, um, our council offices. We had no objections, um. Uh, to the undercroft conversion, but we wanted more information on storage space and etc. So Catherine, is that on this one?
Yes, I just wanted to check the application number, because I don't think it is twenty.
No, it should be twenty-four, I made a note here.
Thank you.
Twenty-four double zero two four three.
Because I was working with the application for flats, which was forty-eight, I mean, I can say. I tried to see the answer, see why, you know, they, they had decided that they required eight skips. For for recycling and for general rubbish, um, he's been storing, he accommodated five, even though he was going to have an extra.
So the, the reason for refusal, which is interesting, um, although we were quite happy with the conversion of the undercroft to a one bedroom flat. The planning officer said there would be harm to the character and appearance of the conservation area. And it would be contrary to the Buckingham neighbourhood plan and to the borough plan, so that one was rather put back in. So. Um, and then finally, thirty-six Chandos Road, which is the high mer extension to create another five rooms, which we opposed very strongly. That has been withdrawn for the time being. Um, there was two appeals, land at Castle, the old Morton Road, which, um. And they were all aware of it, a hundred and twenty-four page report, remember we had a six day plan. Appeal inquiry into it, the Secretary of State, um, has granted. Approval, but he disagreed that the application demonstrated it had its own character and identity. He felt that land, layout and built form appeared standardized across the site. With a focus on individual plots as opposed to creating a cohesive design. Um, he found that in parts of the site, the design did not make the most of opportunities for activating frontages. Providing well-designed car parking, which is one of our issues on this. He also agreed there was a partial conflict with the local planning authority's policy about parking spaces. At, at two point eight metres when they were two point five metres wide, but he felt that was outweighed by other considerations. Interestingly, um, the inspector disagreed with some of the section one oh six payments. But he did allow six hundred and thirty-two thousand for management and maintenance. Two hundred and sixty thousand towards the Buckingham transport strategy. And one point six million towards education, but he disallowed four hundred and five thousand for leisure. As he said, it was already provided through other commuter subways. So we have lost a little bit there, but overall, the Secretary of State considered the planning balance was in, not in. Was in accordance with what was needed, there was no five year plan. Um, but he weighed in favour of the proposal of delivering market housing, affordable housing. Which he noted was thirty-five percent over and above the Buckinghamshire. And public open space, which all immediately carried significant weight, it was a hundred and twenty-four pages, as I said. I just tried to pick what seemed most appropriate for us, John.
So, I understand you're correct, Chair. We, we're going to get the extra and totally spurious lane on the Stratford Road roundabout. And the dotted lines next to it on the jail, but we're not only going to get a bicycle bum track, which was promised.
Yeah, he actually noted, the inspector actually noted in the Secretary of State agreed regarding the left hand turn lane at the. Stratford Road roundabout, he said that it, it was noted that a councillor and Buckingham Town Council. Uh, had no expert knowledge in this and he preferred to take the statements from the traffic experts. That's how he actually put it. He also said that, um, the steepness of Morton Road had been overstated by Buckingham Town Council.
Yeah, we know that. Let's designate it and run it whatever, just like Robin was saying.
Just a comment, I mean. Perhaps we should find out what a definition of steepness is. Um, um, you know, because it obviously is quite steep to me. Um, um, it's unfortunate, and I just think it's an unfortunate comment. In a report about individuals, I don't really go along with that type of thing, really. Um, I don't think, you know, there's a comment on it, it's, it's a past event and, uh. And as many of us know, this has been rumbling on for, since two thousand and. And, um, one in two thousand and two in various sizes, so, um. But it is unfortunate that they would mention individuals and an individual councillor and an account councillor's opinion about, they are.
Wasn't named, just, just a councillor.
Well, I always wanted to be an individual, so it could have been me. Gone an individual, aren't we all individuals?
It did unfortunately exaggerate the steepness of Morton Road twenty-four. So anyway, that's where we are, and the other planning appeal, thirty-one Highlands Road. Um, that was done very quickly, the inspector allowed the appeal. Above the replacement front boundary wall. Saying that the appeal site, um, had an altered character at that end of Highland Road. Uh, pointing out there were still school gates and high fences right opposite this path. He said he accepted the character of the rest of the road with bungalows, but he said the impact on the character and the. Uh, appearance of the area is not in my opinion harmful, so that's how they allowed it. Um, yeah, right, there's no questions on those, we move on to council matters through. Receive news of Buckinghamshire Council, new documents and other information from Buckinghamshire Council members present. Andy or Robin?
Shall I go and, so you can do yours, you've got them on the agenda, haven't you, Andy?
Yeah, yeah.
So if I, if I, if I go first, that's all right, you have that, um, just to inform you that, um. You, you will all remember our longstanding interest in the archaeological site on the Brackley Road. Um, there is some, um, what, what's, we are getting progression. Um, the stuff is going away now, um, for DNA analysis and it's going to take some time. Because it's quite a lot of bodies to do the analysis. There is an aspiration that we might find the sex and, and ancestry, um. In the twenty twenty-five, but, um, although that seems a long way away, I suppose they've been in the ground for some considerable time, so. That's probably the shortest period of all the story altogether, isn't it? So hopefully we'll find some information out in twenty twenty-five. Um, I think you've sort of noted that, that the officer and I write to each other on a cyclical basis about this subject matter. And, um, so there are some similarities, um. Which is a comment, not a definition on it, um, of the, as an anecdote, the outcast. Um, situation, um, burial, but, but that might be a similarity, but it might not be defining. Path to towards it, but that's just a positive note, because I know that you're all interested as I am in it, um. But things are moving forward at last, so I think, um, you know, um, we should know, um, just at the time. Prior in Perder, I expect, um, when, um, when this comes out and, and, and then another issue. You will have seen the correspondence to do with angular water response to the. Um. OJ way application, which seems to be, seems to be somewhat contradictory to the agreement to approve the application of the delegated powers. Um. I haven't had a response yet, but I've written to planning officers seeking clarification around those points because. Um, having asked it to go to committee and was overruled. Um, my main concerns of, uh, of wanting it to go to committee is very much around the same. Elements of the town council and other people about the drainage and the sewage, the fact that angular water state in their correspondence. That they hadn't done that work, but it states in the report something different and it was agreed. So they can have it, we can do the change here. But it does need to be answered, are the two decisions in line with each other, I think it's worth knowing because, um. You know, that's a legal application, it's, it's been signed off, it will go where it will go. But there still remains the question of the drainage, the sewage, um, which I questioned. Several places in the past, and I still remain completely concerned about the sustainability of that estate. Not to the estate, but to the other people living near the estate, um, you know, where the drainage sewage will go, who will receive it. And how it will be dealt with, and, and, and I think that's a reasonable concern to have. Um, that's really why I wanted it to go to committee, is to allow the expiration of those concerns in an open meeting. To be able to discuss it, and that was denied on both accounts, the town councils and the other. And, um, so we are where we are, um. Also, just, it might be interesting for you to know that today at the cabinet meeting, um, there was, um. We talked about the eight or two one, um, there was a huge amount of money agreed to be spent on the. Um, an Housbury Ring Road today, and it went through cabinet and the decision was made, it's a public decision. Um, so I think that those two things I think are interesting and, um, the most of what I did, I put in a. A report, I don't need to go back over again, but I thought, yeah, I didn't actually mention the archaeological detail. And I hadn't written to them about my concerns, because I do need to understand these matters. Because when you've got something that doesn't seem to sit right, you, you need to understand what legal context it was taken in and, and does it actually. Sit correct, I'm sure that will be the case.
Robin, if I could just ask, um, go back to the archaeology, Brio, who's still in West End Farm. But although they're not proceeding the application, they did agree, didn't they, to pay towards the forensic work, is that correct?
Thank you, Chairman, yeah, um, I, I, I can go through my correspondence, um, on it, which is lengthy, as we both know, because we've talked about this all the time. It was agreed that they, after some time, that there would be a contribution made, the, it was settled in archaeological. Um, until that payment was agreed, and Buckinghamshire Council can't actually fund that amount of money for. A, a developer's thing, but we are in a more. Well, not prosperous stage for the victims of the cemetery, but, um, we are progressing, so my hope is that. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, we might be in a position where, um, some information might come out of it, I know my good colleague. Friend Ed Prince Dell would be, might be interested in it, and, um, because he was at the onset, and, um. And we might be able to get some sort of, um, storyboard perhaps, um, about what the archaeology meant to Buckingham. And how it changed or didn't change our history, um, because I think that's important and, um. Whether I'll find out as I ask, if I would relate to anyone in the home or whether I was responsible for putting them in the home, in my family. Um, only time will tell, but my, my DNA is available to ancestry DNA, so, um, if they find any similarities to it, um. Um, I don't think I could be prosecuted this long after the event, because a crime committed by somebody else in the family, so I'd be all right.
Are you quite sure? Thank you, Andrew.
So this is quite a while ago, this was a member's workshop on the application for the land behind Manor Parks and Mates Morton. And so Carolyn already knows. The, this is about the reserve matter, so obviously we're looking at the detail. The developers are now amending their proposal, they're meant to come back or submit and. Some amendments in line with the previous comments, if I recall rightly. Sometime in March, which will have an awful lot of time anymore, and then it will go back into consideration. So that's all, that's all I can say, so this is, um. Crawling on, there is, are still some disparities about the number of houses that are supposed or not supposed to be built there. Uh, and contradictions which are, you know, strictly, if you're strict, going strictly by the letter of what has been written in the outline. Application isn't feasible, so, uh, we shall observe this, it'll. Chunter on and something will happen eventually, I guess, but.
It was up to a hundred and seventy.
It was, no, it said at least, the, the outline approval, as far as I understand it, says at least a hundred and seventy. But they can't build a hundred and seventy houses. It's, they're now at, at a hundred and sixty-three is the latest plan. So, but as I said, an amendment is due to be submitted, I, you know, I suppose at their leisure, but, um. Um, and then we shall see.
That won't affect Buckingham Town Council?
No, it will not affect Buckingham Town Council because we're, because we're looking at reserved matters here and not at the, uh. Principal approval of it.
Thank you, Carolyn.
It's just right, and what I was saying is one of the key stumbling blocks is the biodiversity net gain. They cannot find enough, um, even with the reduction in houses. Um, so they're having to rethink their landscaping plans as well.
Yeah, thanks, Rob, Robin.
Um, you chair and, and here in the camera. They haven't done the detailed plan yet, have they? It's not gone forward, this, the reserve matters, have they done the detailed plan for this?
That's what we're talking about.
So, so, so.
Produced one.
But has his detailed plan gone forward for approval?
No.
In which case I would suggest there's an opportunity to have a second bite at the cherry. Because I know what a disparity it caused everyone, I think that, um, based upon what you've said. And what I think the local member present would say is, I think I'd have a stab at, um. Calling the detailed planning, if there's grounds for concern in it, which you are expressing quite well, I think. About the, uh, detailed plan, which will involve the environment thing and also the sustainability of it, and I think that that needs to be. Surely, um, they're not going to, um, ignore that, considering it had such an interesting journey. Um, um, I, I would be tempted to, um. I, I think it, it's definitely worth calling on those grounds, because there are some concerns of it. But you've expressed. But you've expressed around the actual viability of it and how it can actually meet what it said it's going to do, which will be in the detailed plan. And whether that's been agreed for outline planning, the detailed plan will be what it will be, and if it isn't what it was supposed to be, we've all got to live with it. So I think this is, I think, something that should be tempted.
And, Andy, was this not the point of your workshop?
Well, no, the workshop was more to, uh, inform members of what was going on and to allow us to raise issues that we knew were the case. So this is, I think for big applications like this is not unusual, is my understanding, although I've not been to one before, obviously. So we are awaiting, I think, yeah, uh, Mates Morton Parish Council and myself as Ward councillor are awaiting the amended detailed application and then we'll look at it and we'll take those things into account that you mentioned, Rob.
That I'm very happy to support you, um, in, in those questions, because I think that we do need to discuss those elements, because they're the elements which people are going to live with post-development, post what it is and, and if it is all wrong.
Yeah, I.
Can I just correct, can I just talk, because nothing to do with Buckingham Town Council?
No, I, I, I.
The outline we had, we had a saying because of.
No, no, but I, and it's nothing to do with Buckingham Town Council, but I am this cat, as the members mentioned it, um, Harry, I mentioned it, I, that's my view. Um, not that I'm quarrelsome or anything, um, um, but I think that you make that a second bite of the cherry around it to actually make your point.
Noted.
Anyway.
And that was it, really?
I could, if I could ask you, has been something on Facebook about you and the other Buckingham East Town Councils attending flood thing?
Oh, yeah, 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 the, uh, that was quite interesting, actually. So, uh, this is the, this is a relatively new approach to, um, flood risk management. This is the River Lek, which is a minor river. So it's not under the auspices of the Environment Agency, but under the auspices of Buckinghamshire Council. Lake Hemstead, as some of you may know, is, uh, a particular hotspot, the Church End for flooding. And, uh, it's however, quite, as we all also know, quite small, so it is not a candidate for major engineered work. So this is the first time that Buckinghamshire Council has put in place with the aid of a charity that deals with this sort of, you know, a voluntary organisation and the landowners has put in place measures at the, um, in the, in the catchment area. So it goes up towards Lulix and Daryl and then it goes sort of, you know, some of it goes east and some of it goes west. And I think it's on the eastern bit where they, where they've been working, able to work with the landowners of, you know, Tile House Farm and that area. And so they've shown us what they've put in place. So this is, uh, I will not talk you through all the details of it, they are. They are minor things. I found it really quite interesting and it's sort of something that will hold a thousand cubic metres here and a hundred and sixty there and another two hundred there. And if you put enough of these in, you can just take, you, you know, you could take half a metre of the of the flood as it comes through, it holds it back temporarily, releases it more slowly and that may just be enough aid to not flood the, uh, houses in Blackhamstead Church End that are prone to flooding in the first place, or at least give the residents enough time to move their stuff upstairs.
There is also another effect of the River Lek, um, that comes, comes under the A four two two capital, capital to the bends and that has been.
Yeah, so. So there's a lot, they have somebody who seems very knowledgeable who's been working with it, they've also done work in Milken's on the, on the Ouzil, I think. You know, I picked it up. So I thought it was quite interesting, they, uh, what seemed insane when I heard the Buckinghamshire Council officers talk about where they were looking here and there and everywhere to find tiny little pots of funding in order to put this scheme of about a hundred and thirty thousand or so together, which they've probably spent half as much again trying to find the funding. So that just says, says something about how, you know, the the effort that goes into finding very minor parts. So that might be of interest for, you know, for future.
The obvious question we're going to be asked is, would this ever happen above Buckingham on the great tunes?
I don't know, it's questionable. I think this is something that is being uh, investigated, they're writing papers about it. So the River Lek is a little bit of a test case as well. So they're still learning how best to do this. For the River Ouz, my understanding is it would have to happen quite a lot upriver. So this is something that you do in the catchment areas, it's not something that you do on them, well, I suppose you could do it on the main river, but these little things, they are really, they're, they're high up in the, uh, in the tributaries.
Yeah, I know, Rob, if you were involved in these tenoration ponds, I'd rank like.
Yeah, I, I, I'm involved too much, but, but, but the, the thing is that all these prams, whatever they're doing, it, it, Andy has made a really good point, it's actually getting the funding to, um, secure to do these things, because there is no pop money outside and they are looking at things in Tindwick, um, which is above, where all the water goes through Tindwick, ends up going through Downey Gold Rings into Buckingham. So any improvement to Tindwick makes an improvement to Buckingham. Um, any Tindwick that works in Gortha, um, makes an improvement at Buckingham. So we shouldn't be, when other villages are having these sort of schemes put forward, we should be quite supportive, because as Andy has said, any cubic amount of water which is held back for a short period of time may make the difference between the pinch air in Buckingham, the flooding. So they are doing work and, and most of that stuff came out of the section nineteen agreements. Section nineteen, all right, I kept on section nineteen.
Yeah, I think that's what they're called.
And there, there's one on Walk, there's one on, um, on Tindwick, um, and also it's, it's seems to be a wheeze with people who want to build that they pick up on that as well now. So we just need to make sure that, that we monitor it and if we can support villagers getting these schemes, especially if they're upstream. Um, that's got to be a good thing for us as well and, um, if it stops them getting flooded, it'd probably stop us, so.
Yeah, this is a point. You're going to have these ponds everywhere, is that what you're saying?
No, they're not, no, they're not necess, so they're not necessarily ponds, they're not permanent. So that what they've put in place is little buns that hold the water back for maybe a few days and then. Yeah, and then they're meant to empty again. And so it's, uh, the lack, obviously the landowner gives it up a little bit of rough land that, uh, they might have used otherwise, but it's waterlogged anyway. So it's, uh, there are pictures on it somewhere, which I can try and find, but they're very small things in the landscape, they're not big things and they're not meant to hold water permanently.
Well, this is a good concern, if, if they work on them, they get silted up, which means they can't hold the water.
No, no, it doesn't work like that, so.
Well, I know that drainage is, it's very difficult to find suitable pieces of land because land is drained. So what you've got to do is find a piece of land that isn't drained, isn't on, because otherwise whatever you put in there will be cancelled out by the drainage, so. So it is really officer timed, whatever, and, um, maybe, um, maybe someone will write a massive paper on it one day with.
They are writing it.
And, and then it will, and it will guide everything.
Thank you, Rob. Uh, Andy, thank you. Is that complete report?
Yes, I believe so. Any other questions, Fran?
Thank you, everybody. Um, item twelve three, uh, consultation on street trading policies. Um, John.
Um, I think this is a problem. I think this is an attack on some very, um, probably low income local business people. And I think there's, there's no explanation as to why they're making all streets consent streets as they say. They're requiring a heck of a lot of these traders, um, DBS certificates and everything else. Their policy is a mess. I mean, they, for example, at one point they say, uh, in the policy, we need a direct from the consultation. And that's in there, they're saying consent will not be granted to any trader directly next to the road with a speed limit of thirty miles per hour or above. So that's why they said we were a consent, so how are they not going to grant any trader? There's no explanation for what problem this is solving. Um, I think it's really a huge bureaucratic burden upon the council. And because of that, they're going to have to charge quite large sums of money from these fairly poor traders for this consent form, and I utterly reject, um, this whole approach. If there's a rig, a particular trader, then I'm sure there's existing ways to deal with that. But to have a blanket policy covering all streets in the county, I think is a disproportionate and unfair, sludgehammer the crackin' nut. And, and I think it's basically about income generation and they are taxing some of the small businesses probably out of existence and I think it's wrong.
Thank you.
Um, I don't, as we just said, I don't really think it's, I think it sounds more like town centre.
Rob. I'm, I am interested that it's street trading because there are some implications to this. I think it's nothing wrong with both committees making a comment on it and I, 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 I am to repeat what John said, that you made a good, very good point about this, it's all anti-competitive, it's, it's got no lodge, it's got no explanation why it's necessary, which you should really give a reason why it's necessary. Um, and if it is income generating, technically their own, their own paper says that anything within thirty miles, so we'll have to shut the market now. Because the market's actually, um, too close to the road now.
So it exempts the market.
I'm joking, I'm saying, but it's what I'm saying is it stops that. And if you were going to do any initiative of doing some, it does have an implication on including events, because there's, you know, we're allowed to fill in these forms when we do, presumably if we do a event in the town centre. Um, yeah, oh, thank, thanks, thanks, uh, but it just seems, it's, it's, it's just hours gone mad really. Sometimes the nice thing about being in the country is you, you just juggle along with each other. Um, you don't try to be too regulation. So I don't know what the legal, you, Chairman, what's the legal basis for doing this? Is it a necessity, somebody's told and they've got to do it? Or is somebody sat through, um, dreamed this all up? Is there some governmental legislation that's just driving this along? Because if it's dreamed up by the council, it, I, 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 I think it's, 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 they could have used their time much more proactively, couldn't they?
I think just to be absolutely sure what we're talking about, street trading is selling or offering items for sale in an area freely accessible to the public. Uh, we're proposing to designate all streets in Buckinghamshire as consent streets. So traders will need to obtain a consent to trade unless exempted by law or local dispensation. Activities not affected by these regulations are peddler certificates issued by police, trading in an established market or fair, trading in a trunk road picnic area, newspaper vendors, garage forecourts, shop fronts, ransmans such as Milkman, home of highway licences, either tables and chair, i.e. tables and chairs or papers licences and street collection permit holders. And they're proposing to offer exemptions in the following areas, non-commercial events, e.g. fates and charity fundraising events, public areas of covered shopping centres, working farms, residential properties, e.e. garage sales, home of sale of homegrown produce.
Yeah.
And the sale, domestic sale of used vehicles. So all those are exempt, it doesn't actually even offer a lot that people might want to be trading.
I don't really understand what people are selling there, isn't it? There is exactly seventeen.
George.
For example, it allows people to park their car on a verge and sell it. I mean, that seems to be allowed. It allows farmers to sell their stuff on the side of the road, um, um, but not somebody maybe selling something else.
It does, it does say working farms are exempted.
Exactly. So why a working farm, why not small business people? Why is, why a working farm would sell something like that, but somebody else who wants to sell, I don't know. Honey or something like that, they say it doesn't produce, what does that actually mean? I'm sorry, but the whole policy is, is badly flawed now. And what about, I mean, the obvious example for us is desperate down, is he going to be stopped by?
He's got a licence.
Down from, he's got a full licence, desperate down, he's a proper trading fish patient, he's been established.
Yeah, but is he going to have to apply, comply to all the good stuff?
Um.
But trading law, it, it, it.
It seems to be something to do with, um, anti-childhood obesity, because they weren't, um, they're asking you, can you, uh, do you want us to stop having ice cream vans outside schools and things like that? So that's the only, only tiny bit of common sense I can see.
I agree.
Now, I was just going to say, it's not obvious which bits would actually fall under and I'm, uh, yeah, Jane has spotted one and I, I have this feeling, but my memory now, no, let me stop this. I thought there was something in the Buckinghamshire Council meeting in December. I vaguely, but it might have been something else and I don't recall it. Yeah, well, that as well, but, um.
Let's just see, what we have to do tonight, I, I had just talked to some term clerk about this, I was unhappy that you.
Goodness, Mark, thank you.
Come before planning, because I felt it was more of a town centre matter, but she made the point, um, that the planning committee is a consultancy and makes representations as required in all matters relating to roads and highways. And she says that we, we do need to fill in this, um, tonight, it includes on the twenty eighth table, but she says if members don't have a specific view on each question, then that part of the survey can be delegated to officers and we can act as the subject matter experts. I mean, there are questions in there that we couldn't possibly hope to answer about, um, people's. Do, are, are people paying the right tax and do they have motoring offences? Have they got any convictions for sex and indecency and, uh, many, many things like this that we, we can't possibly answer. I'm just going to quote one to you, item number five, um.
Oh, yeah.
Where it says, do, do you agree that the people who have goods or power to know this, so do the legal drug use should be allowed to use it? Which advice we, so what we need to do, we need to get, are the sixteen questions, we need to answer what we can, John?
Well, my proposal is that we object to this in principle and we use the answers, the answers to our questions should be all ones that carry on with that same thing. I don't think this is a good idea at all. I want them to go back to the drawing board and think about the implications of this. The impact analysis, the thoughts of impact analysis at all, but this feels very negative, it feels like a, a sludgehammer, the crackin' nut, there's no justification for it. So I would propose that we, we probably, in all possible ways.
Yeah, we could probably answer in question one, do you agree or disagree with the proposals?
We say no. Yeah, I'd actually strongly disagree.
Then against the rest of the questioner.
Yeah, that's my proposal.
You're proposing that, we have a second, please.
Second, second of mine. I did write one, one comment if I can check, item twelve. Right, all of those things in there, there's two things that concern me. Most of our criminal, the criminal offences are covered under the criminal legislation, so they should be pursued by the police anyway. And if someone has been convicted of a crime, are they considering that as a reason why they wouldn't have it? Because we should have sort of things of rehabilitation in this country, where, where, when you come out of prison, you should be able to actually, um, start picking yourself up and become a decent citizen again. And if this is going to stop that, it's really quite progressive, because then what you're just going to do, probably through, end up on the same path that got you.
It says, Rob, it says unspent convictions.
Unspent conviction.
That means they have been convicted, but they haven't.
That, that breach is the Human Rights Act, because, no, unspent convictions is not, you've got a conviction and it's unspent. That doesn't mean that that's a punishment. You can't punish someone twice for a crime that they've committed, it's against natural justice. If they, I'm not saying that, that I agree with, um, but I'm saying that if you've been released and you're out on licence, or you've got an unspent conviction, you, what, what are you going to do then? Say, well, you can't go and work in a shop because you've got, it's just, it's against natural justice, it really, it's, it's awful, it's like, it, 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 they should have thought that through a bit more carefully.
But listen.
Just to give context, unspent convictions, um, a drink driving conviction would be considered to be unspent for ten years.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
We have it, unless anyone else has got it. John, um, you propose that we disagree with the proposal to introduce street trading controls for all freely publicly acceptable areas. We need to give a reason for that and your reason was?
The reason was, um, this is a sludgehammer the crackin' nut.
No, that's not, that's not, that's not.
They don't think there's, there's, there are existing measures which can be used. To designate all streets in this way is disproportionate to the, the problem, um, itself.
I mean, it's hard to get that absolutely.
It's a disproportionate response, we'll make that one in one or two places in the county.
And by strongly disagreeing with that, we, that makes the rest of the questionnaire.
Irrelevant.
I, I also think, Chairman, and I I also think, Chairman, and I I think I need to put in this, the elements of it in section twelve are probably in breach of the Human Rights Act.
Yeah.
And they're probably in breach of the Criminal Justice Act. And they're probably against what they're called natural justice and rehabilitation. And I think that to draft that into a document like this is, 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 is punitive. I, I, and if anyone disagrees with me, please tell me I'm wrong, but I think that it's punitive. We don't have this thing where you can rehabilitate yourself and become a better person. We never go into this and do that. And we always make other hope that people will. Once you remove hope, you have nothing left, do you? And I'd like to add that in here, because I think section twelve is.
And and it's anti-business as well.
Yeah.
Justification.
No, there, there, there's no justification.
No, well, thank you. Well done.
Just a point of clarification, um, dishonesty and an unspent conviction. Um, am I going down the right lines of fraudulent activities and things like that? That's, that's what it would, oh, okay, right. I just thought it was general dishonesty and which like, you know.
Uh, any crimes being committed.
Another, another angle to do that, it's probably.
Give me, that's the start.
It's probably, um, affecting people, um, from minorities or from, uh, poorer socio-economic backgrounds or people with, um, learning disabilities, um, disproportionately, um, things like, um, having evidence of a current driver's licence. Why is that a necessity to be a trader? You know, you might have someone else that is driving you to, like, wanting to be a trader. Uh, you might, yeah, people that cycle around, um, have the, you know, things like this. They go down the, um, the Equality Act, which would also be a good.
No onion sellers from the France.
That's probably the idea.
So what we have in front of us, which has been proposed in second, is that we disagree with the proposal to introduce street trading controls for all freely public accessible areas. We particularly take issue with some of the conditions, um, as outlined in section number twelve on unspent convictions, and we also question whether this will meet the provisions of the Equality Act. That should cover everything.
Yeah.
Captain, go ahead.
That sounds good to me. I mean, that, it's almost identical to some of the first half, right? It's John's initial comments right at the beginning of this subject, which was disproportionate, unfair, on low income traders, um, it's a, it's a piece of generation.
Yeah.
Power, Caroline mentioned, and I thought it was a very good thing, there's no, um, I think.
Evidence.
There's no evidence, there's no evidence.
Please speak.
You're gone, gone Caroline.
Shy about saying that, but, um, there does not seem to be any evidence justifying this, this act at all. And without evidence, how can you possibly agree with something?
Thank you.
And by answering question one in that way, it makes the rest of the question, the questionnaire. Yeah, yeah. Right, if anyone has checked the volume, happy you got it just like that.
Yeah.
If, if then, that was a happy for us, we can have it together.
Yeah.
What, what we understand that.
We take a little off which is second.
I take it the movie that he.
Nothing, they just.
Complete raspberry, basically.
Do you blow one now, Jane? Just remind me what.
No, I, I just haven't thought of that phrase for a long, long time. I'll look that one to you. You're more skilled.
So if you put it on, you can go. You're taking a sledgehammer to crack a raspberry.
It is not a good idea.
We've, we're gonna propose one second. Can we put this to the vote? All those in favour? And that is unanimous. It would be called working out.
That's fine.
Not to worry about the other fifteen questions.
Lovely, very much.
Right, maybe the term clerk can appear now. Right, um, item thirteen, you've wrapped up there, as we don't present it on outside problems. Down here. Um, item fourteen, in report on the council Buckingham Council Committee meetings, the February North Bucks area planning committee meeting was cancelled, the thirteenth of March, when there were no Buckingham applications. Strategic site.
There was a meeting, um, the, there was a meeting, I was just putting it up here now.
It, it, it just didn't have anything to do with Buckingham.
No, but I, just to, can you please, um, the, the decision, what concerns me with the meeting is.
So which meeting we talk?
It was the one in, um, March.
Thirteenth of March.
Thirteenth of March, ah, it's March. And when maybe it's my fault, maybe it's my understanding of it, the, the application was called in by three members, which was great. Um, and the application was to agree by the planning officers, um, and the application was then refused um, by the members. On some of the grounds that it was refused on, unless my memory of it is completely at skids them, very much similar grounds to what this town council had asked to call the Ozzy Way application to commit to you. You know, and I, which, which worries me, and I did, and maybe I should follow it up separately. But my view about planning and is that you should be consistent in your actions. Consistency in your view, and there shouldn't be any deviations for it. Otherwise, the system looks wrong. If one, one application is dealt with in one way and no one's dealt in no way, and members have the right to overturn an application and, and they, it was called in. So it was a call in, and it wasn't in Buckingham. And, um, and it was supported and it went through. But I, I, I just think that members would be too good as to watch the decision and the such a bit of stuff. And, 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 and please abide the fact that my memory of it is skewed by my complete, that's discussed at the Ozzy Way application. Whether I'm completely wrong, it's just I think things should be consistent, Chairman. That consistent decision produces good outcomes because people understand where everybody is.
Thank you. Um, strategic sites committed fifteenth of February was cancelled and the Buckingham Department was cancelled. Um, fourteen three, Road Infrastructure and Housing Select Committee, which is on the fifteenth of February, appendix E, there is a report on that, um.
Noted.
Noted.
Noted. Thank you very much, everyone. You can do the meeting at the link that Catherine provided.
You do.
Um, and the other meeting, Transport, Environment and Climate Change Select Committee, that will be this week, twenty eighth of March. Um, we had a look at the agenda, there's nothing that affects Buckingham, so there's no questions for us to answer.
Oh.
We're only allowed to ask about things that's wrong on the agenda and it's all H S two this time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, item fifteen, Enforcement, to report any breaches. Anyone hasn't, I, you know, it's like Catherine, if two possible ones, um, no, that's not important. Um, at one, um, a leader's to let a boat that was thrown into the ditch on the A four one three junction, the top junction with, um, Linden Village. So I sent a photograph. Presumably in touch with leaders.
I'm staying.
Thank you. Um, Lucy first.
Just on the walk down here, I noticed that in the barber's opposite spec savers, there's two brightly illuminated LED, but they're in a sunlight, but they're kind of like bright LED twirling, I mean, barber poles. I just wasn't sure that that was conservated in there, you know, or because they're inside the glass, it's all right.
Can we ask Catherine to take a look?
Yeah. Yes, because we, we've already had a walk with the brother exterior.
Yeah.
I'll go and have a look.
This is one where the pet, where the pet shop used to be.
No, no, not with the, the days, opposite.
Is it a farm shop?
One of them, one of them.
Yeah.
Ah, oh, actually, actually in the, in the street, okay. Thank you for that, Lucy.
Cut off the now, time to go.
It's quite obvious indeed, why that's wrong.
Well, not, if they're not linked, I did, I was on your page from my way down, so I'll email.
Did you really light them up when you?
Yes, that's good.
You really light them up when you're actually open, wouldn't you?
Not necessarily.
Okay, right.
I'll have a drive.
Robin, it's three forty.
Um, yeah, um, through you, Chairman, see, there's not a logic behind it. Um, we've just, I've heard you discuss the, the Mays Morton application and the cutting down of forest free area and the planning application. Logic to me seems that mentioning consistency is when you address the Ozzy Way. I don't see any necessity there was to be cut down that great swath of trees um, to, to the application. We run up to the, um, up to the time place. I don't see why that was cut down. I don't recall it to correct it being part of an application that shall be cut down.
No, can I just intercede here? But this, we have reported this to enforcement. Yeah, we've been given a number. This is, this is what will be based to. Their, 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 some trees grabbed out the hedges already. We, we reported this a month ago.
My view is that they've already provided all the evidence that they need to in their response to the other application, which was under the Forestry Commission intonation. I mean, it might be worth just drawing that to their attention in case they've missed it by any chance, um, that we note their comments and do those comments apply to this, because.
Catherine is already going to be looking at it possibly there as for.
Yeah, but I, I, this isn't, I was making it now.
How you stick is it was a list.
It can be short.
I, I did have a, no, I, I assume that classification is something akin to listing a building. So there'll be a list somewhere.
Yeah, I know. I, I just, it, it, it exercised my big brain speed.
Just to give members information that Ozzy Way Phase Two, which has not yet had any application for, uh, uh, reserve matters application, they have already grabbed out the hedges, cut down the trees, which is concrete to be approved or settled. They shouldn't start any work until um, the plans have been approved, the reserve matters have been approved, and it is within enforcement.
Yeah.
Whether they have the will to act on it or not, we'll find out. Obviously, phase one is now, that's now history, even though they started before they got their, um, starts approval. Um, that, that's, that's now history, unfortunately. Um, thank you. Anyone, anyone else on any enforcement? No, um, rolling lists, you noted pre-selling applications, land grab reports, calling requests, and higher licenses, which Catherine's put together. Catherine, anything you'd like to add to this?
No, no, there's, um, the tree that, um, it was going to be a danger, so I will contact, but there are so few free applications in the last year, half of the year before. Yes, we've all got.
Well, yes, as council puts it, the Lord gives.
Or we get a reputation as a, as a free watch clock. Nice. Thank you. Anyone, Martin?
Just the definition, this is gonna sound silly now, definition of a tree? Is it something with a trunk over a hundred millimetres in circumference, is it?
Not when you plant it as a sapling, it's still a tree.
Yes, but you could then take that away if you wanted to. That's what I'm saying. It becomes, does it not become a tree at a certain size, then you have to apply for an application to do something with it. Otherwise, if it's smaller, it doesn't matter.
I think, I think a tree is something that has a trunk with branches that come out of it at the top. Otherwise, it's a shrub.
Sorry, not necessarily a tree, but a, a small tree as opposed to a established one, so.
No, a small tree is still a tree.
Quite often, Martin.
I think may have the answer.
Sorry, if someone wants to find a tree, they have to put a replacement in, that would be a sapling, obviously. It's still a tree.
Yeah. Thing of may have the answer, yeah.
Um, so this is from the Gov UK website.
So quick.
To be considered a tree, the plants have at least one woody stem and they're expected to achieve a height of at least five metres.
See, it wasn't just.
Better than to achieve.
It might not for a hundred and fifty years.
Yeah, I mean.
So, a, a tree, a tree does not need to be healthy to be growing. The word growing does not imply the creation of additional use, which is quite a lengthy.
All right, forget it.
I think we're getting a bit of a soft.
Yeah.
You enjoy it, though, right? Question, Chris. Just a thank you to Catherine for putting it together.
Yeah, thank you.
There are a lot of work, I know. Um, quarterly update, um, on section one O six matters, Catherine, again, provided this spreadsheet. Any comments on that?
I'm just, okay, come, Mr. Wilson, this time. That's what I've got for time. And it is quite comprehensive.
Yeah.
But, uh, anyway, I send it to Lee because he's the one who needs to know.
We have covered section one O six in some detail to that, right, John?
I'm just wondering if there's anybody left over at the skate park. Can't quite work out your biggest.
Well, the, I did ask the question because we had councillor Harris standing there in the skate park, in the photograph in the paper, saying that they've got a grant for it of quarter of a million quid. And I thought, well, that's about what the section one O six money amounts to. So have we spent half a million quid altogether? Or does he mis, misinterpret the word grant?
Sounds better.
Probably. I don't think there was a whole lot of change.
Robin?
I think it actually worth asking the question because if the section one O six was spent in its entirety, that's an end to, um, that was laser development, but I, although it would be a plan for it. A grant, when, when, when people build things, you have to be honest about who funded it. If the council have got a grant to do additional work, you should thank them for going and working again, a grant, but, but spending section one O six from which residents are paid for when they bought those is hardly a grant. I just think clarity would help when it around these things. It could be that he did say what he's meant to and it was written in the article wrong, you know.
Hmm.
These things happen. Um, he did look very lonely, though, didn't he, in that photograph on his own?
Lucky for myself.
Um, and I did do all I could do to get as many people involved in photographs down there. Didn't I, Annie? I, I worked overtime on getting people in photographs and I, we were including and we looked so lovely, all of us together, I thought. John?
I'm just looking at the figures you've prepared here, Catherine. It's, I don't quite understand. Take the top one, did it grow, down to far? It says the income was a hundred and sixty thousand. An expenditure, it says nothing's spent. Um, but the balance is zero. Where's that money therefore gone? It's nothing to be explained. How come the balance is zero? Why did the balance add up to six thousand still?
Oh, okay, so. I mean, it, it, I didn't want to bother Mr. Brophy again, because he's the one who really knows. I'm presenting this obviously on request. But the bits and bobs from all sorts of places go to all sorts of destinations and I don't know how they keep track of it.
Well, this is my, my concern is that are they keeping track of it and are they?
I think there are enough officers down there to keep track of things. We were supposed, I think, to have a enforcement of section one O six terms officer down there. You know, other than just the guy who processes the money, um, Billy West, isn't it? I don't know, I never found out an officer's name for that. I don't know whether it was an appointment or whether it didn't work. I, I mean, it's quite a novelty to have the council actually kee- keeping track of these things. They didn't use to. We used to have a terrible job. A D D C ones are back with theirs, but county, we were lucky, we got even an, an annual update, let alone a quarterly one.
It also says spent now, so I suspect it's something you're calling.
Yeah, the balance theory has been, that what you're saying to him.
I mean, some, some, some of them will be expired ones that had to go back to the developer, that explains it.
John, yeah, it's simple. Well, this is my concern. It's like this land in northern Morton Road, the phase two government. There was, you know, three hundred and sixty seven thousand pounds, apparently about a hundred and fifty thousand has been spent. But it's still two hundred and seventeen thousand pounds in the kitty. What's that meant to be spent on? I mean, this, I mean, this is, this raises a whole heap of issues here that, 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 because all, we all know that with the new housing that's been put into the town, that the infrastructure in a variety of ways has not matched the demand created by the new housing. Yet at the same time, section one O six, you're supposed to mitigate that, that infrastructure demand is not being spent. Then the council, the Shire council, are just not doing their job. They're actually making it worse. Because section one O six, we know is probably an understatement of what infrastructure is required. That it's not all being followed up and chasing and making developers spend the money, or it's being spent on various projects. Then we're getting a double whammy. And also with regards to the inspector's report on Morton Road, phase three, it looks like, you know, the pub, bicycle pump track and the rubber fields have just been thrown to the wind now because of, of what the inspector said. This is wrong.
Yeah, I, I read out earlier the, um, some bits of the appeal here in the form of Morton Road, phase three, and the inspector said in there that he thought that. here for Walton Road Phase Three, and the inspector said in there that he thought the local planning authority was confusing and conflicting some of the sections one O six months, so.
Well, I, I, I think that's evident in this. I mean, Catherine, I'm sure she's done that best with the information given there. I have no doubt about that, but clearly they're not on top of it. They're just not. And I don't know what we do.
That's the point he was making.
So I think, I think we should use that inspector's report and write to the Shire Council saying, we are very concerned that the town is not getting the benefits it should be getting as a result of the section one O six agreements. And we are asking for this to be had a significant review, um, so that the town to go, gets what is due. Can we do that?
Yeah, that's proposed. No information. Um, I, I took a couple of checking, yeah, when I read that out. I think that is the reason that he refused the four hundred and five thousand pounds, um.
So that, so that's, this is mainly worse. The only reason not to spare without lots of lump of money that will have benefits in the town. Because they're hanging that up together.
Yeah.
I mean, that's like, that's an appalling allegation of not being responsible by the Shire Council. Appalling.
So what you're proposing, John, is that we.
We write in the strongest possible terms to say we are very concerned that the state of playing.
We want clarity on the.
Monitoring section one O six, um, use, um, is actually meaning that the, the, the town's are missing out on benefits that should have come through down the pipeline due to certain concerns. We would allow them to review their whole way approaching this and report back to us.
And that we noted the appeal inspector's course.
Yeah. That's the idea.
Now have a second and then we.
I'd just like to speak on that.
Well, have a bit of second first. Lucy second. Thank you, Robin.
I think we need to make sure we, we are drafting the question as John wanted to do it because we need to evidence base the question to them, make sure we, we only need to pick on one area. But if we just do a broad question to them, they'll say, oh, a variance of such and such and so and so. So, and we need to make sure we get a response, otherwise we're wasting officers' time drafting the question and and we're not gonna get a response which even answers the question.
Well, this.
Steve, can I carry on talking or?
That's all right.
No, I, I'm just.
I know what you do, Rob.
I know. We don't worry about that. Um, we are in agreement, but I just think that let's pick the elements out of the spreadsheet and let's pick on with agreement, those things that you have mentioned, and make sure that we cite it, whatever, because I know what they'll do. They'll write back and say, we've covered all this in such and such and so and so, and we'll just be left even more angry than we are now. So, um, and, and, and I think the point you raise is absolutely good, but I think it's the question that has to be sharp. Just saying generally, we think you are wrong because we know that you are wrong won't do it. If you're saying that, correct me if I'm wrong, Don, you're saying that the, the bits in the inspector's report and that element should be included. And we wrap that into the question to the financier, that's, that's really difficult to get out of, and that's what I think you're saying, aren't you?
Well, yes, well, I trust happens to. That bring that together in a way that was science and general.
But on general terms, I do believe that section one O six agreement on the unless that's gonna be redrafted now because of the appeal, dated in the section one O six agreement, which was very key to the discussions of it, that the playing fields would be offered to Buckingham Town Council. And, and that was in the section one O six agreement. The thing from our point of view, which is interesting to Steve, is that that would be with agreement through a commuted sum. So what we have to be assured of, and I think something that Steve may have to ask separately, um, is that we haven't lost any possibility.
Which land are you referring to?
Land on the Maze Morton Road. When I asked, um, some years ago to ask that the land in the section one O six agreement would be offered to Buckingham Town Council, the playing fields, not the way that Tindric Road was drafted, which meant that it was with agreement, and I think it says in the agree, in section one O six. And if it doesn't, I can be corrected. But, but what I'm saying is, we need to ask what John said. And which is, why aren't we going a long way around it? I think we need to ask that that agreement still goes, because we would be able to presumably say to them, yes, we will take that land on in some agreement. If that's been cancelled out by all these actions, that's really quite alarming. I mean, it's something that there's no rush because they're not available for a while, but, um, but we did need reminded that because the playing fields then would be ours. And if we decided to take them on with agreement, and, and, and if that money's locked well because of these such and such actions, uh, it's more key to us and it is a financial interest.
I think we're gonna need to wrap this up. So, John?
I agree it needs to be concise, but I trust Catherine will be able to, to do that. I don't think we need to get into the detail, into the weeds of the actual section one O six agreement.
Yeah.
For, for, for lots of.
I guess Catherine, the link from the inspector.
I think it should be about the draw, general point. The playing inspector, my monities, and the fact that there's lots of gaps in this, despite Catherine's best attempts.
So can we go to the vote, can we go to the vote now unless anyone else wants to speak? All those in favour?
Just saying, look, you need to.
You proposed it, John. Lucy's second. Could we go to the vote now unless anyone else wants to speak? All those in favour? That is, uh, unanimous. Thank you.
I'm in perfect.
Yeah.
Right. Um, annual statistics received, oh, sorry, um, yeah, annual statistics received, statistical breakdown of twenty twenty three applications. Catherine, anything you'd like to introduce that, that draw our attention to?
Uh, well, we're maintaining our number of applications. It seems as though we've had a lot this last year. But it actually is very much as it has been over the years. Same percentage of people who've been there is applications. Um, it's just that they're coming in months in the spread. Um. The members did ask, as I keep a record of which many meetings were cancelled in all the areas. And you've got a table of that, and you'll see, I'll be red. Months there are, every, every month that's in a red means that that was a meeting cancelled. And, um, we've taken the prize because sixty nine percent of ours were cancelled, and that's more than that in the other area.
History of mine, Memphis, we haven't actually attended any, either ABDC or Buckinghamshire Council planning committee meeting since February twenty twenty. Oh, just over four years then.
As I say, the, the worst trees applications, seventeen last year, thirty three the year before. And that was about half of the previous year, so it's half the number of applications.
Thank you.
And then, um, the best thing is the last thing. And it is not even a whole page of undecided applications in the year. And quite a lot of those were the ones that came into the December meeting and the first, first January meeting. And we have been up to three pages of undecided applications this year and before. We've had as many as sixty plus undecided, so they are really catching up with their backbone. On the other hand, we've still got a two thousand sixteen, a two thousand eighteen, a two thousand twenty and a two thousand twenty two still outstanding. But we did get the two thousand, other two thousand sixteen one sorted fine. It's been hanging around for ages. It's, um, but they're there for you to look at. I mean, if there's anything you want to ask me about, feel free, but I think sometimes just having the year on your power signal.
Again, thank you very much for putting it back.
Lots of the follow-up ones, we thought this, this is getting silly. Where we've got the same application coming back like we do tonight for the top avenue. Is because they're doing certificates of all ones which aren't actually appropriate to be an application and they have to come back for the proper application. So it's the same. It's usually the same drawings. It's just a different date on it. And we've got one for the next meeting as well.
Our head rate's gone down.
Any questions? John?
Our head rate's gone down, though, isn't it? We opposed thirty four, fifty three percent of those were approved. So in comparison to previous years, this mail could rank as well.
No, it's.
It was fourteen percent last year, earlier to the previous year. So whereas they, when they were listening to us more in twenty two and even twenty one, they're not seeing us less.
That's because you do it, because you have.
Thank you. Right, could we move on then to which matters to report? Any damage to purpose relevant signage in the town accesses, use or other urgent matters? Andy?
Oh, there's a sign on the grass verge, on the by, on the bypass. Past Burly Peace, for the sign for pizza and.
Yes.
Ah, yes, yeah.
Yeah, and I know where it is, it goes, it's a burly piece. It's where the shop is, and there's a new pizza house there, and that's where the sign is on the, on the verge. I think that's appropriate.
Oh, pointing into London.
Yes, so it's before the beginning, yes.
Yeah, it's one of those, only at this height nonetheless, yeah.
Um, nobody's mentioned the bypass and the collapsed drain again, which is still a pyramid of phones that has missed.
Well, you're under guarantee. Are they waiting for drains?
Um, I could give you a rundown. I, I've been talking, which is not something I never do. And, um, as you all know, I'm very sensitive at our talking. And, um, and I am understanding as we sit here tonight, we might wake up to find that, um, hope is that some of the drains on the um, forwarding one to be done. Um, I did go up and have a good chat with all the people up there and a bit of a chin wag. And pointed out that it's, so the plans is that some of the ones running towards Stratford will be done. Hopefully tonight, some of the ones, there's no one on the roundabout towards Leeway.
What sort of drains?
All the drain covered, it's all covered.
All drain covered, spitting.
The, the works are gonna be done. Now, that's what I was, that's the ambition. And I won't know that ambition tonight, go to the walk late in the night and, and take the air, which one does, to see and talk to the chap again as they're trying to work. But, but that's what the hope is, that they'll do that tonight, so that's the plan, so it may not happen.
But the one on the bypass, just before Badgers, three weeks it's.
Yeah.
Well, I, I reported that in first instance and I got to the safety officer on my return back from Buckinghamshire Council, it fell in. So I stopped and reported it and Len's cones put on it within the hour. But what I can't do is get the job done within the hour. What I did get really quickly done, probably probably it's a case where John's Facebook page, a page probably really helped in that as well. The actual, um, well, that, the, the actual one on the roundabout because that, that really exercised their minds about the fact that there was a drain down on the roundabout and it was in public view and when I phoned them, they were already on their way there. So whether it was anything I did or whether it was John's Facebook page, I don't know. But I, I think social media, its interest was mentioned, so, so I think that's the.
About seventeen on that roundabout.
It sounds like the community talking about these things actually drew attention to it and did some good, so, you know.
Well, it might be the swing that I put to Mars in Annabucks Highways about it, but the photographs might have prompted a bit of reaction perhaps, because it was very graphic photographs that somebody else had taken. But I think the issue really is, that's been exercising some people, I'm on the Facebook group, is it was inspected the night, the teatunnel before, and it was deemed to be okay. And then overnight, a lorry hit it and then it was not okay, very much not okay. So the question was, by what judgment was it made that it was going to be okay? Well, it clearly was on the point of of significant damage, which then happened. That's the bit that I think people would actually want to know. Without, whoever the officer was, we don't even know who it was, because it was all coming, but, you know, money going this, this rental, I said, that's what happened, I think. But we need to know what process was used, in terms of that things were okay, that there didn't need to be repeated action. Because clearly they did, and it was delayed and it could have been done before. I mean, who knows, somebody who could have got seriously injured with that, I think they, 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 we dodged a bullet, you know, notionally. Because if that had been hit by a smaller car, I don't, I don't wanna know, you know, what happened as a result. So that's the issue I think that we ought to raise with the highways department. I don't wanna leave.
Do we have proof of this inspector the night before?
Yeah, yeah, because it was reported back on the street, on the, on the face by street. It's all the same, it's been inspected, it was okay, and that was put up on the Facebook.
Well, perhaps we could tie that in with another request for something to be done about the eastbound bypass just before the junction with Badgers.
Yeah, I walked past it and looked over.
Yeah, and that could be tied in.
That should be.
I don't know why it's so.
Should be done tonight.
That would.
That's, that, that, I think that's been done tonight. They also marked up the carriage weight to be done on the other side. You notice the road collapsing in the two, in the two, two, seven, eight works, just collapsing by the Lais Hill Development. That, that carriage way flaps and that's been marked up. I think John's right in the sense, whatever. What actually triggered it, I don't know, but I don't think.
Somebody reported it.
No, no, I mean, I mean, I'm, I'll go back and I'll try and find out that, but, um, fix my streaks isn't, is grown, is not, is that science, is it? Um, I think we could say.
Karen, um, I've mentioned this once before, the roundabout by the Ring Road Garage has still got dead tree killing the head of the mountain. And, um, nothing seems to be done.
Christmas, yeah.
Well, well.
A little bit of Christmas, yeah.
Thank you, women. Thank you, men. Thank you. Right, there's no others. Chairman's items, real information I have.
I'd like to just do a press release. Um, I've listened to your discussions tonight and, um, and your discussions about um, the application to do the, the Morton Road. I really think that the information that you learned tonight is worthy of a press release because, um, it's more people know about that stuff with the forestry mission, but it may be to the goodness of the town, of the community. There's a case where people read these things and may remember it. And, um, it may, those sort of things are interesting for the public to know. Um, and, um, and it draws attention to that decision and, and that, and, and how that works. And, and if that's appropriate, I suppose you do a press release on that, because it's something that you are commenting on. And, um, and you have a view on it. And the report is in the public domain. And it's interesting, I thought it really interested me.
Also, though, down the report, this is generally interested and correct. We haven't lost that general, so we can't get back to it.
Can't get back to it, thank you. So you might like to bear up at the next meeting, or?
I think it's a bit out for it then.
In regards to the, the public interest, uh, in the, um, street repair, breaking repairs, um, in regards to the, I might actually say about.
Well, we've already finished that, actually. Okay, sure, I, I can say chairman's items, real information I have now. Our date for next meeting, Monday twenty second of April, following the interim renting of the good castle. And it is, uh, nine forty.